Before we get started, would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation by Mr. Culver?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, my nation and my government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God, we ask you to guide us tonight as we make decisions on behalf of the city of Springdale and its citizens. Lord, we ask that you be with those affected by the tornado this last week, Lord, that you would just give them strength. And we thank you so much that more people were not hurt in that storm, Lord. We ask you to be with the governor and his staff, Lord, and our mayor and his staff at the city. And we ask you to be with the men and women of our armed forces. We ask these things in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Welcome to the April 5th, 2022 meeting of the Planning Commission, Springdale Planning Commission. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Have a roll call, please.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Culver.
Here.
James David. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
Now, we need to, all our minutes were, the March 1st, 2022 minutes, we're in our packet. I hear.
Motion to approve minutes?
I have a call, a motion and a.
Second.
Second.
Oh, it's all in favor. Yes, it's a, it's a voice vote.
It's a voice vote?
Yes.
All in favor of passing the, approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, here we go. We'll start out with the tabled items. We have several items that were tabled on our agenda. The first one is B, or first one is C 22-01, Taylor and Miranda Drake. Tabled per staff. Next one's R 22-18 and R 22-19 are both withdrawn per applicant. Next one would be C 22-03 and C 22-04, tabled per staff. RP 22-05, tabled per staff. L 22-14, tabled per applicant. L 22-21, tabled per staff. That's all there is. Now, we'll start out with our previously tabled items. Start with R 22-05, Octavio de Legarza, intersection Robbins Road and West Graham Road. Rezone from A1 to SF1 presented by Swolp Engineering. See Swolp Engineering's on Zoom.
Phil, you're muted.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is just a rezone of some property. The client wants to do some large lot, single-family residential, like .4 acre lots. On Robbins Road.
First of all, let me apologize. In your packets this time, I was confused between SF1, 2, and 3. So you got corrected staff reports sent out to you this afternoon and probably at the table. This zoning request, this was an area that was not covered on our comprehensive land use plan because it was property that was included in Dutchland Heights before the consolidation. But the residing request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city, assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size, and encourage the development of a wide variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Okay, this will be a call for the vote.
Any comments?
Yeah, any comments from the audience? Call the vote. Call to vote, Mr. Culver, commission.
Austin.
Yes.
Clayard.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance and it goes to council on, Debbie?
Yeah, I'm 14 and four, 14 and five is 19th, 19th, right?
Now, we'll go to the second councilman.
Okay, the 26th. That's good.
Okay. You would thought we would have looked at April the 26th, but staff will prepare the ordinance. It'll go forward on that date.
It is the 26th.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
R 22-07, Hawksview subdivision, 89, 8915 East Brown Road. Rezone from A1 to PUD. We also have a free plat, 22-03, waiver 22-05, waiver 22-06. And it's presented by David Gilbert.
Good evening.
No. No, it is.
How about that? Okay, that'll be better. Good evening. What we're proposing to do is build eight single-family lots on roughly 10 acres. This is in the western, north, extreme northwestern part of Springdale. It's so far northwest that the street addresses are based off the Cave Springs grids, that that gives you an idea of where we are. This is being presented as a PUD with common space. There's a lot of paperwork that I won't bore you with that I'm sure Mrs. Christie will cover in detail here in just a couple of minutes. There's not really much to say. The detention we've looked at, and if, if the maximum buildout is done per the development plan, the runoff will increase in depth by about an eighth of an inch. And the northwest Arkansas BMPs, which were prepared by the regional planning commission in conjunction with all of the cities in the area, say that the objective is to not create any artificial drainage systems, but keep things as natural as possible. And what we have here is a very shallow ridge that drains naturally by sheet flow in both directions. So we're trying to keep it that way. With that, we'll be glad to take any questions you might have. Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential uses. The residing request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval with development plan and covenants as revised. It protects a positive aspect of a neighborhood character, appropriate locations for single-family, assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. Okay, this being a PUD, there's a lot of conditions that goes with this, and we're going to spend a little bit of time going through all these conditions. Okay, it is a proposal for a 9.65 acre subdivision. And I will say upfront that I recommended that we go this route rather than a standard rezoning because of the uniqueness of the area in which it's being developed and the type of development that's being proposed. So that's the reason you're not seeing it as just a standard SF1 subdivision or SF2 or something like that. The staging of this development will be all subdivision improvements, including but not limited to streets, water, lot lines, pen, lot pens, and common space will be constructed as one time, as a single stage. There are no future stages of the subdivision proposed. Houses shall be constructed on the eight lots at various times. It is the developer's intent to construct homes on all eight lots within five years of the commencement of construction, but no definite timeline can be established at this time, and we'll get into the reasons for that in just a minute. The only grading to be performed will be that needed to install the roadway and required utilities. Home sites will be graded as needed in order to minimize impact on environment. No mass grading is proposed. They are proposing to use existing homes because they present a significant source of scarce and expensive building materials. Conventional demolition of existing homes not only wastes these resources, but uses up increasingly rare landfill space. A more environmentally friendly solution is to reuse these resources wisely by moving existing homes onto new home sites. And that's what they're proposing in subdivision is to move existing homes onto these, under this, into this subdivision. It's the developer's intent to locate existing wood-framed or steel-framed structures which cannot remain on their current site, move these structures to this subdivision, and remodel them in accordance with all applicable state and local residential building codes. The interiors and exteriors of the homes will be remodeled to bring them up to date, and the homes will then be offered for sale or rent at the discretion of the developer. All prospective structures are located, oh, no, as prospective structures are located and identified, permits must be obtained to move them to the site and to begin construction. Homes will be placed on new foundations and structural components will be brought up to the current codes. Then plumbing, mechanical, and electrical systems will be brought up by the current codes and remodeling will begin. During the process, the exterior finishes of the homes will be remodeled or replaced as needed. From the time of its arrival on the site, each home should be completely remodeled inside and out in approximately 12 months, barring circumstances beyond the developer's control. Now, the only question I have on that is the city's ordinance on moving structures says that the house building or structure to comply with the requirements of the code within 90 days from the date of the issuance of the moving permit. And Ed, I'm assuming that means it has to meet safety standards in plumbing and electrical in that 90 days? Does it necessarily mean the exterior finishes have to be completed or the interior finishes? Because that says 90 days and they're asking for 12 months.
Yeah, we would treat that as two separate permits. There's a moving permit, which means that the house has to be moved and it has to be stabilized. It can't be sitting on some chassis someplace somewhere. And then there's a remodel permit for the rest.
Okay, so all it has to do to be, I want to make sure everybody understands, they can bring it in and tie it down on the foundation, and they don't have to begin any other, any other work on that structure in that 90-day period?
That is correct. I mean, you would get to the point where it sits for too long with being vacant, then it would become a nuisance, and then it would be subject to condemnation.
But they're asking for a 12-month period. I just want everybody to understand that that's the timeframe. So if one comes in and it gets put on a foundation and work doesn't begin on the outside or any of the other remodeling for six months, they wouldn't be in violation of city code?
Yeah. From previous experience, from the previous dwellings, they were, they were moved, placed on site and remodeled almost immediately.
Okay, okay. I want to make everybody understand. The developer reserves the right to construct new homes in a conventional manner. The developer reserves the right to retain possession of all lots or to sell any or all of the lots prior to or after construction of a home on said lots upon completion of the final plat. Okay. They, they are proposing a subdivision that will have minimum setbacks of 30 feet in the front, eight feet on the side, and 20 in the rear. There are no maximum setbacks as established. These are similar to what can be found in an SF1 zone. A single residential street will connect to East Brown Road through a 50-foot corridor and will pass through the middle of the site, ending in a cul-de-sac. Now, there was some question about the length of the cul-de-sac, and Ed, I believe you indicated that the fire department is not opposed because of the number of the structures, but they would still have to ask for that?
Yeah, this was discussed with the fire department or the fire marshal.
Okay.
Because of the number of the structures being so, normally a cul-de-sac of that length would have 20 structures on it.
Okay.
This is going to have eight.
Okay, so are they going to have to ask for a variance for the length of the cul-de-sac even though it just has eight structures on it?
Well, that's, that's the planning, that's the zoning requirement, so I guess.
That's a master street plan. Katie, can you, can you address that where they need to come back and ask for that? Variance for the length of the cul-de-sac?
I think in the past, we have required a variance for along the cul-de-sac.
Okay, which means that won't hold it up tonight. It's just something that will have to be done. Then the fire department, as, as we're talking about right now, will not be opposing. Okay, okay.
Ms. Christie, is that not something that is covered in the PUD? We talked about several issues that normally would require a variance, but because this is a PUD, it's part of the PUD, would this not be one of those items?
Well, we'll, we'll work on that and decide whether we got to have a variance or not. Ernest, Ernest here yet? No, well, I mean, can that be something that's covered by the PUD without a variance? Yes, okay, so you don't have to have a variance?
Thank you.
We're good. They are proposing to do a 24-foot wide paved surface with width with gravelled shoulders. Four feet in width on each side is allowed under Springdale Cut Of Ordinance Section 112-4 in estate subdivisions. But as I read that section of the code, the lots would have to have 100-foot minimum to use that estate section?
These lots do have 100-foot minimum frontage.
Okay, there's a place over here that says they have 80-foot, that you will allow 80-foot frontages. So we got to make sure that they're the same. Under, on page nine, it says, "There shall be a lot area of not less than .47 feet. In addition, there should be a minimum lot width of not less than 80 feet on public streets." So if you're going to use that road section, that'll have to be changed, and you can't allow anything to have less than 100 feet.
These lots, according to the plat, which is part of this whole set of paperwork.
But the document itself needs to be corrected.
I, I can correct that to say 100 feet. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. A common area, oh, and let me back up. Each placement of the home on individual lots cannot be determined at this time in Part 2 to the fact that existing homes are proposed for upcycling as they become available, and neither their dimensions nor the exact floor area is known at this time. Will building inspection require a site plan to show the location of each of those when they get moved in?
We can. We don't normally for a new structure, but we would, we would, I mean, normally we do a corner check and for a new structure. But since this is being moved in, I mean, we can require a site plan. It's not that.
Okay, you just make, you need to make a note, David, that there needs to be a site plan submitted for each individual one. A common area consisting of approximately two acres of open pasture with some shade trees is proposed along the southern border of the site and is 100 feet in width. An outdoor grill and picnic tables will be placed near the western end of the common area, where existing trees will provide shade. The common area is covered by water main easement in favor of Beavure Water District, and no permanent structures will now be placed within that easement. The remainder of the site shall remain open space and will provide open space for soccer, football, horseshoes, foot races, family fun, picnics, and other similar regional activities. The preliminary plat has not yet been considered by the planning commission. We'll look at that in a little bit. The ordinance requires 15% open space, and that meets that requirement. Again, we're talking about eight lots of varying sizes for single-family homes. Lots 1, 7, and 8 will be approximately one acre in size. Lot 2 will contain approximately .8 acres. Lot 3 through 5 will contain approximately .5 acres. Lot 6 will remain approximately .9. Lot 9 will contain common area approximately two acres, or about 21% of the total development, and will be adjacent to lots 2 through 6, allowing direct access to the smaller lots. Lots will front on a two-lane public street. Now, access to the common area, I believe in the covenants say that it will be a permanent easement across the driveways of those existing structures?
The easement is actually, let me count, because I don't remember the lot numbers here. Between lot 5 and lot 6 on the preliminary plat, this is the street plan, and it probably doesn't include that, but the preliminary plat shows between lots 5 and 6. It's at about 7 o'clock on the cul-de-sac there at the end. Lot, the line goes from the cul-de-sac down to the southwest corner. East side of that is a 20-foot permanent access easement across lot 5 to gain access to the public area.
Okay, it needs to be the same terminology that's in the covenants being that, or it shouldn't, either that needs to be corrected or something, it needs to say the same thing in both places?
Yes, ma'am. I can fix that.
The street will be constructed without curbs and gutters and have a four-foot gravel shoulder. They're proposing those to be, the street dedicated to the city in a 43-foot right-of-way? The permitted uses in this PUD will be use unit 1, which is citywide public uses by right, use unit 8, single-family dwellings, unit 28, home occupations, unit 29, home offices. The conditional uses will be a use unit 2, citywide uses by conditional use permit, and use unit 3, utility facilities. These structures will be allowed to have accessory buildings, which will include private garages, storage facilities, gazebos, pergolas, and children's play areas, private greenhouses and agricultural collections, porches, awnings, screen rooms, sunrooms, and pool enclosures, flowers and vegetable gardens, and swimming pools. Swimming pools, tennis courts, and similar recreation facilities shall be permitted on lots with an area greater than .7 acres, which would be lot 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, and 9, but not on lots 3, 4, or 5 due to site limitations. With the exception of flower and vegetable gardens, none of the above accessory uses shall encroach on building setbacks, utility easements, or septic systems, including primary and alternate drainage fields as shown in the plat or as determined by the designated representative for each individual lot, whichever restriction is greater. Exterior finishes for accessory buildings will conform to the requirements listed for the dwellings in this development plan. Lots 3 through 5, the total area of all accessory buildings should not exceed 4,000 square feet. Now, does that make them, that would set the size of the structure? Because you can't have an accessory building that's larger than the primary structure.
It doesn't relate accessory structure to the size of the primary structure, but it does state that the maximum available roof area, impervious area from accessory structures is 4,000 square feet. The maximum house size is also listed as 4,000 square feet. But you could have a 1,000-square-foot house and a 3,000-square-foot building.
I don't think by, by definition that an accessory structure can be larger than the primary structure itself. We'll have to look into that one. That one's new. We had talked about that before, so I haven't looked that one up yet. Lots 1, 2, 6, 7, and 8, the total area of all accessory buildings, greenhouses, swimming pools, and similar recreational facilities shall not exceed 4,000 square feet, except that the lot owner may petition the architectural review committee for additional area up to 4,000 square feet, 8,000 total square feet, 8,000 square feet total, which may be approved or denied at the sole discretion of the ARC. You're proposing to have hobby chickens. I think the city ordinance does not allow chickens in any zone except in A1 zone. Okay, so that, that section will have to come out?
Let me, let me get clarification on that. So you're saying no chickens are allowed in a PUD anywhere in the city of Springdale?
And that's correct.
Okay.
Hobby rabbits, you have proposed those to be a permitted use. They have to meet the following requirements. Not more than six rabbits shall be allowed per lot. Both male and female rabbits are permitted. Outside slaughtering of rabbits shall be limited to rear yards behind the rear of the primary residence. There shall be no outside slaughter within front yards. The intent of this regulation is that outside slaughter of rabbits not be visible from the street. I think Ernest is going to look up about slaughtering. Ernest, are you looking that up? Okay. All rabbit enclosures shall be placed at least 25 feet from neighboring dwellings and located in a rear or side yard, but not located within a building setback. Rabbits shall be provided with adequate shelter to protect them from the elements. Rabbits must be kept in an enclosure two feet off the ground that keeps them from leaving the property of their owners and protect them from predators. All roofed areas of rabbit enclosures shall count against the total area of accessory buildings permitted on each lot. All enclosures shall be kept in neat and sanitary conditions at all times and must be cleaned on a regular basis so as to prevent offensive odor. All food use for rabbits shall be kept in a suitable container with tight-fitting covers so as to be inaccessible to rodents. All rabbits shall be adequately fed and watered and receive any applicable vaccination medicines or medical care so that the animals will remain in healthy condition. These regulations apply to rabbits only, no other livestock, including but not limited to goats, pigs, cows, sheep, alpacas, llamas, et cetera, but excluding common household pets are permitted. Prior to the construction of enclosure and prior to purchase of a rabbit, a drawing indicating where the enclosure will be located on the property shall be submitted to the architectural review committee for their approval. No rabbit shall be kept without an enclosure, and no enclosure shall be constructed without ARC approval. The other thing proposed is agriculture beekeeping. Beekeeping shall be permitted within this PUD and shall meet the following conditions. It shall be unlawful to keep more than the following number of colonies on any track within the PUD based upon the size or configuration of the lot upon which the apiary is situated. Four tenths of an acre, but less than one acre, three colonies, one acre or larger, four colonies. All honeybee colonies shall be registered with the Arkansas State Plant Board and maintain an active certificate of inspection from such board. Africanized honeybees shall not be permitted. Hive shall be placed at least 25 feet for neighboring dwellings and located in a rear or side yard, but not located within a building setback. Fencing, flyways, in each incident which any colony is situated within 25 feet of a public or private property line on the track upon which the apiary is situated as measured from the nearest point on the hive to the property line. The beekeeper shall maintain, establish, and maintain a flyway barrier at least six feet in height consisting of solid wall fence, dense vegetation, or combination thereof that is parallel to the property line and extends 10 feet beyond the colony in each direction so that all bees are forced to fly at an elevation of at least six feet above the ground level over the property lines in the vicinity of the apiary. Fences shall conform to the fence standards outlined within this development plan. Each beekeeper will ensure that a convenient source of water is available to the bees at all times during the year so that the bees will not be, will not congregate at swimming pools, pet wiring bowls, bird baths, or other water sources where they might cause human, bird, or domestic pet contact. Prior to the construction of an enclosure and prior to procurement of bees, a drawing indicating where the enclosures will be located on the property shall be submitted to the architectural review committee for their approval. No bees shall be kept without an enclosure, and no enclosure shall be constructed without ARC approval. No building erected or structurally altered, and that needs to say no building moved in, erected, or structurally altered shall exceed a height of 35 feet. And then we just talked about the lot area needs to say 100 feet on a public street. A maximum of two units per acre, but not more than one unit per plat of the lot. We talked about the 30-foot front setback, the eight-foot side setback, and the 20-foot rear setback. Off-street parking shall be provided in accordance with Chapter 7 of the city zoning ordinance, except that neither residential driveways nor provided parking spaces will be covered with an impervious surface. Driveways and off-street parking spaces shall be surfaced with crushed stone aggregate base and shall be regularly maintained by the occupant and/or landlord so that the surface is firm, stable, and usable. If otherwise, surface driveways and off-street parking shall be covered with pervious material as approved by the ARC committee. Nothing in this article shall supersede the applicable requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act or the Fair Housing Act. Consistent with the northwest Arkansas best management practices and with special consideration of the carst recharge zone, no concentration of runoff is proposed. Street sections will not have curb and gutter to reduce the amount of impervious area. Sidewalks are not proposed for internal streets, and internal streets shall be 24 feet in width, unless noted otherwise as needed to provide access for suppression apparatus. And I think we're talking in those areas, they need to be 26 around a fire hydrant? Okay. A four-foot gravel shoulder shall be provided adjacent to the internal streets. Roadside dishes will not be provided as sheet flow is to be contained wherever possible. This property lies within the carst recharge area as designated by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to protect endangered species living in and within the Cave Springs Cave. The city's master plan shows low-density residential, which I've already said. This will have single-family homes. We got through all that, or moving-in structures one more time. Don't need to go that. It says, "Every effort has been made to utilize features already listed in various district regulations contained with the code and to avoid specialized features. Proposed use units were taken from the RE district regulations with a list of conditional uses limited even further. At the urging of the planning staff, conditional uses, there are lot lines, 36, which are horses kept in residential areas, temporary classrooms, and temporary conditional use, use is 34, which is a model home found in RE but have not been established or eliminated, but have been eliminated for this PUD. The minimum heated floor area for homes within this subdivision is 1,000 square feet. The maximum allowable heated area is 4,000 square feet. Homes are limited to a maximum of three bedrooms and two baths due to the constraints of their proposed septic systems. Due to the inclusion of common areas, the lots vary in size. Lots 1, 7, and 8 are just over an acre." Lots one, seven, and eight are just over an acre. Two is .8, three is through five are approximately half acre, and lot six is .9. Lot two through nine, the smaller lots are immediately adjacent to the proposed common area. All exterior walls of the dwellings erected on the lot shall be finished with brick, stone, fake stone, veneer construction, or concrete composition siding such as hardy siding, vinyl, or metal siding. Dormers or gables may be covered with any of the materials or vinyl siding. Sofits and fascia may be covered with steel, aluminum, PVC, or concrete composition material. Roof shall be covered with the shingles using articular composition or better. Off-street facing front elevations for corner lots. Windows may be true light or divided light. All replacement windows must be approved by the A R C. Any colored or decorative glass or street-facing elevations must be approved by the A R C. All the lots shall be maintained, mowed, and kept free of noxious weeds, and whether they be improved or unimproved. The owner shall see the entire lot, provided however that this section shall not apply to developer during construction and development of the development. If owner allows grass to grow such that is more than eight inches high, the developer or the association shall have the right, but not the obligation, to have it mowed without giving notice to the owner, and shall charge a $75 service charge for arranging the mower in addition to the amount, to the amount it costs developer or association to have it mowed. All lots must include design criteria sufficient to reduce runoff and a heretofore best management practice for the carst recharge area. As we said, the street is 43 feet of right-of-way, 24-foot wide with four-foot shoulders. Access from the subdivision will be from East Brown Road with the same street dimensions that we just talked about. No vehicles shall be parked overnight in the street of the development. Owners shall provide sufficient off-street parking to accommodate the vehicles used by their families and guests. Furthermore, no semi-trailer trucks or commercial vehicles shall be allowed to park in the development, either on the street or on the lot, provided however that this restriction shall not apply to development during construction and development of the development. No vehicles may be parked in front yard at any time. My question with that says you can't have any semi-trailers or commercial vehicles, so if someone works for a commercial, can they drive their vehicle home at night?
They're going to have to park it somewhere else. They cannot park it in this development.
Okay, if it's a standard pickup, they can't? Or is it just larger-sized vehicles? Because this says-
Well, the way it's written, it would apply to all commercial vehicles. I mean, we can amend that a little bit to count pickup, to allow for pickup trucks.
I'm just asking because I'm going by what it says. And this right now says you can't have any commercial vehicles. So if it's marked as a commercial vehicle for a company, right now it can't be parked there overnight. So I just asked that question.
That's my understanding from the owner and the attorney that wrote the covenants, yes.
So this proposed density is one unit per 1.1, two acres. There is a set of covenants, which is also part of this development plan. There is, and this says, "Developer expressly reserves a perpetual easement over all driveways, parking areas, sidewalks, and utility easements comprising a portion of the common property to connect them with other driveways, parking areas, sidewalks, and utility easements within the development, location of which shall be selected by the developer." So are you telling me that's what's shown as the access to the common area? This language that's in this covenant doesn't necessarily meet what you've got in the development plan or on this drawing? So those two things need to be done the same. And that's Article 3, Section 3.1. All lots are sold by the developer to third parties. The board shall consist solely of members appointed and determined by the developer, and the developer reserves the right in its sole discretion to appoint and remove members of the board for any reason. Once all lots are sold, new members of the board will be selected in accordance with the governing documents of the association, and it indicates how those board members will be appointed. Developer reserves the right to amend or supplement this declaration in any manner necessary to establish the validity and enforceability of this declaration or to bring this declaration to compliance with federal, state law. City needs to be made a part of that if there's changes made to the document itself. Fences shall be constructed of wood, metal, PVC, or other similarly approved materials. A privacy fences shall be constructed so that the framing shall be toward the inside of the owner's lot and constructed at a height of six feet to maintain uniformity. All fences once constructed must be maintained by the property owner who had it constructed or their successors and interests. There should be an access gate upon each of said approved fences for the purposes of allowing utility personnel and other public employees access to the lots and performance of respective public duties. No noxious or offensive activities are allowed. No animals, except as we just discussed. Each owner has to have garbage and refuse disposal in accordance with city ordinance. No access to any lots on the perimeter except from the designated streets. No communication towers, mass towers, or structures are installed on any lot, except satellite dishes may be installed only on the rear roof of the dwelling and shall not exceed the height of the lowest roof ridge line of such dwellings. No vehicles may be parked overnight in the streets of the development, provided, the owner shall provide sufficient off-street parking to accommodate the vehicles used by their family and guests. No semi-trailers or commercial vehicles shall be allowed in the park, either on streets or in the lots, provided however that any restriction may not apply to commercial trucks that enter the development in the normal course of business for deliveries. Restriction does not apply to the developer during construction and development of this development. No vehicles may be parked in front yards at any time. No trailer, mobile home, tent, shack, or other unsightly building or structure temporary or permanent shall be erected or used on said lots. However, it is permissible to have a storage building in the rear yard of a dwelling, provided that the plans are submitted to the association's A R C for its approval. Recreation camping vehicles, trailers, and boats must be stored and parked on the lots, except maybe, may not be stored and parked on the lots, except behind the dwelling and inside a fence. On lots with the two front yards, recreational vehicles and boats shall be kept behind the dwelling as viewed from the front of the dwelling inside a fence or other enclosure approved by the A R C. We talked about the minimums, the maximums. There should be no dwelling erected on any lot other than a detached single-family. Garages are not required. However, if they want to have a garage, the developer reserves the right to review and approve garages that are both attached and unattached. Corner lots must be approved by the declarant for a garage facing the side of primary street. No garage door opening shall be taller than 20 feet. Non-attached garages must be reviewed and approved by the A R C. It has a process for how you submit plans to the A R C for approval. It has the same exterior wall materials as we talked in the development plan itself, the same requirements for lot maintenance that we just talked about. The covenants are to run with the land, but it gives the ability for these to be. All covenants and restrictions set forth in this declaration are to run with the land and shall be binding on all parties or successor heirs and sons for a period of 30 years from the date of this declaration. Then it has a procedure for that, and they can be amended, but all that has to be approved by the city as well. No person who is required to register as a sex offender is allowed in the subdivision. Access driveways and other paved areas for vehicular use on a lot shall have a base of compacted gravel, crushed stone, or other approved base material. I question the use of that term paved areas, because I don't think we have any paved areas, correct?
No, I'll check on that. What section is that, please?
That's 4.19. No buildings can be any taller than two stories. If there's conflict, the pud document itself shall control. It establishes the procedure for creation of the association. The annual assessment for each lot is $200. It doesn't show any assessment when a property is bought. It only shows an annual assessment of $200. And it gives the ability to assess special assessments for capital improvements, how that is handled, how late payment is handled, the duties of the board of directors, the effect of non-payment, subordination of the lien or mortgages, suspension of rights of membership, cancellation and hearing powers and duties. The only, it indicates that in the duties that legal and accounting services are to be, can be provided. It has been the city's policy to require the establishment of a legal reserve fund for the benefit of the association once it's established so that at the very beginning there's funds available if there are some legal issues that the property owners need to address. And what we've seen normally is about $2,500 put into that legal reserve fund. Their other powers is to make reasonable rules and regulations for operation of the common property and submit to limitations here and to amend the declaration. Anytime that's amended, it has to be submitted to the city for approval as well, because this is a contract between the city and the property owners for the pud. It establishes the Architectural Review Committee that we talking about, having at least two and not more than five members, and establishes who the original A R C. It indicates that upon resignation of all the initial A R C members, or after all lots are sold by the developer to the third party, the association may change the number and composition of the A R C. It can't go change below what's allowed in here. No less than two, no more than five. It outlines the rights of the use of common property, the extent of those rights of enjoyment. It indicates the developer reserves unto itself the right, without joint or vote or consent of any owner, builder, or mortgage, to file additional plats in the office of the city clerk and ex officio recorder of Benton County. I'm not really sure what that means, but anything that changes the configuration, alteration of that has to be submitted through this process for review. It says without regard to such additional phases, developer other, further reserves unto itself in its sole discretion the right, without joint or vote or consent of any owner, mortgage, or builder, or mortgage, to change the square footage to stay in period. That can't be made clear without the city's approval, because those are the conditions. Okay. That was a whole lot of stuff, but that's what's in here. Yeah, I can go back and highlight everything if you have questions, but that's, we go to this detail because this is a contract between the city and the developer, so we all know what's going to happen in that subdivision. Okay? We need comments.
Before we open up the comments, I ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and please try to keep it brief and to the point. So now we'll open it up to the comments from the audience.
Okay, while we're waiting on someone to come forward, we have received copies of petitions. Those have been made available to the planning commission members, and unless y'all have a problem with this, we'll stipulate all this goes into the record. You might have a problem with that? And if anybody wants to refer to them, we've got copies here if anybody wants to refer to those. And these are concerns that they have concerning this subdivision going in.
Good evening. I'm Todd Stevens. I live on Paradise Place, which is the driveway that is approximately 100 feet or so to the west and on the north side of Brown Road rather than on the south side as this proposal is being submitted. I am representing a collective effort of approximately 24 neighbors here who have all signed some paperwork that you've all have here. So I promise to keep it as brief as possible, Mr. Tyler, but again, what we tried to do is accommodate here. Rather than having everybody come up here and say their piece, I hope you appreciate that we've concise this into one presentation. Obviously, we have some concerns, some issues, and we've tried to concise that down to a couple of different arguments. Argument number one being appropriateness. Argument number two being stormwater drainage issues that are there in that area. Appropriateness, and what I mean by that is taken from the development plan. The development is intended to blend in with surrounding residential uses, which until recently have been fairly rural in nature, while providing an opportunity to enjoy the setting for those who cannot afford to purchase and/or maintain large tracts of land. And in that, the concern is, if I can digest that a little bit, the development is intended to blend in with surrounding residential uses for those who cannot afford to purchase and maintain large tracts of land. The conflicts itself there with what is there, that conflicts with a definition of appropriateness. The proposed development is in harmony with the surrounding uses and the master land use plan. It's not anticipated to cause adverse impact to the existing infrastructure in the area. By developing this property as a planned unit development, the neighbors may rest assured when it comes to what will be built on this property and the manner in which it will be built. That's one of the main reasons I'm standing here, representing the 24 people, because resting assured what will be built on this property and the manner in which it will be built, and if I may add, anticipated maintaining into the future. Is why we are concerned about the appropriateness. Did everybody get a handout from us? You should have gotten a handout or some documents here with a number of photographs, and I'm not worried with all those details.
They have.
We have.
Okay, okay, great. But, you know, I would like just to look through that quickly. You're going to see photographs of a number of the properties that are very, very near the proposed subdivision. 2,586 square-foot home sitting on about 4.84 acres. A 2,000-square-foot home sitting on 11 acres. 3,800-square-foot home sitting on two and a half acres. 37 acres. 9 acres. 3,000 square foot, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you could look all the way back to the very last page, I think that it's page number 17, if that matters, on your handout. That is, and thank you to Heidi on this map here, but all of the properties that are listed here in pictures are on this map highlighted here. And if you look at it as an average home size and as an average acreage size, it comes up to the average home size being 2,438 square feet. The average acreage size is 10.45 acres. Admitted, that is a little bit skewed because there is one farm that is included in that. So even if I take that farm out of there, we're at 6.39 acres. If I look at it as the mode, the median, I don't care what your statistic is, we're somewhere around five acres is what the average is there. Two to 3,000-square-foot custom-built on 5 to 10-acre estate properties is appropriate in this area. Like an antique shop or a neat restaurant is appropriate on Emma Street in downtown Springdale, but we find it difficult to envision the proposed subdivision of old homes that have to be moved. I would question why they're having to be moved from their current location. Moved in from other locations, remodeled, gravel driveways, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. 1,000 to 4,000 square-foot houses in an eight or nine, correct me here, it's an eight-house subdivision, I believe. How is that span appropriate? We're talking about if you built new houses? That's the difference between $200,000 and $800,000 in eight houses in a subdivision. I understand we're not building new houses. Assuming $200 per square foot, which would be very probable in Springdale now. How is that appropriate? And also, I beg the question, how does that blend in with estate properties out there? Be like me saying I'm going to buy 10 lots in a subdivision that has 1,000 square foot homes in it and build a 3,500 square foot home and blend in. It doesn't work. It's not appropriate. My concern is what will this look like in five years? While my house is still sitting there and the majority of these other houses that are custom built homes on five acres are still there being well maintained, what will this look like in 10 years with gravel driveways, with old houses that have been moved in? Moving on to drainage, and I don't profess to be able to talk karst language and speak on behalf of the United States Fish and Wildlife Services regarding environmental impacts on blind cavefish. In fact, I've never seen a blind cavefish. I suppose by their very nature, one's never seen me either. But I can appreciate as the material is provided, that this property lies within the karst recharge area as designated by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services to protect endangered species living within the Cave Springs Cave. The recharge area is designed in order to place a special emphasis on surface water quality as it impacts losing streams and similar features which are thought to be tied to the cave's ecosystem. As such, it is subject to special regulations which are not applicable to typical sites within the city. Wha, what's the term special regulations? Special regulations speaks to regulations over and above, not exceptions to, pre-existing rules adopted by the city of Springdale. Already pre-established things. There's been a massive amount of work and expertise involved in the development of recommended practices over the years, which is summarized by two separate letters provided by the U.S. Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Services directly to your council, to the city council or to the city planning commission of Springdale. Um, those came to you all, not me. And we talked a whole lot about rabbits, chickens, and what Ms. Christie read there, I'm not sure addressed septic systems. We're talking about installing eight separate septic systems in a concentrated area in the highest red zone according to the karst study. There is a well, in fact, there's two wells that set approximately, I'm grabbing at numbers, 50 feet from the back of a lot of these dwellings or at least from that property right there that I have not seen anybody talk about. Will lateral lines be out the back of those houses? And if so, if they approach the rear of the lot on the north side of that subdivision, water flow is going to flow into the, the discharge area of that well, those wells that those two houses use for their drinking and utility waters. We believe that the position of the U.S. Department of Interior is very clear and is the source of a number of the creative maneuverings that we see here in these proposals. Creative maneuverings meaning that there's changes. This proposal that you all see here tonight has changed pretty substantially from the one that was taken off of the docket last month. I don't know if you all studied that or not, but I'm having to do my own maneuvering to even answer a lot of these proposals. Street sections shall not include curb and gutter to reduce the amount of impervious area in the karst recharge zones. Sidewalks not proposed. Um, internal streets at 24 feet in width, four foot gravel shoulders. Um, road ditches shall not be provided as sheet flow is to be maintained wherever possible. The reduction in roadway width along with the emol, elimination of sidewalks within the development and the use of gravel residential driveways for homes, all of this is intended to reduce the amount of impervious area within the development for environmental purposes. When we collectively read that, I'm going to admit that we exhale a sigh of doubt that these are the intentions that this is done for environmental purposes. For example, the section that was removed was dealing with a culvert off of Brown Road into the entryway of the proposed subdivision. Honestly, if you're going to be installing a subdivision, I'm going to say that asking for exceptions to a culvert in the entryway is attention to detail there. And one of the things that was originally said was is that it was inappropriate because connecting facilities on nearby or adjacent property are inadequate or lacking and not necessary for public interest. The facilities referenced are absolutely lacking. I'll be the very first one to admit that. They're lacking because when all of this drainage area was originally constructed, it was a dirt road and was not under the oversight of any regulation or planning commission such as yourself. It was rural Benton County. This area has only been incorporated into the city of Springdale since 2011, and all of the existing homes along this stretch of road were already there with the exception of Jim Sykes' home on Brown Road, which is about another 100 yards or so west of the subdivision that we're talking about. The lacking facilities already contribute to a massive amount of stormwater drainage there. Would you do me a favor and look in the, I think it's the other packet that you have? I'm trying to give you a visual of what I'm talking about there. Look at page eight. Everybody there, you see what I'm talking about, page eight, and then the, the very top photograph. I don't know if y'all have actually been out there and put your eyes on this, but what, what this view is, is from Paradise Place, which is my driveway looking south, basically at the proposed subdivision. And note that there's a building back here in the, in the background. To the left of that building is, is where I'm talking about the driveway will be into the subdivision. Okay? That's what it looks like without a house there, without eight houses there. I'd be curious as to how much water an eighth of an inch over the course of a lot of square feet would add to. I'd be, I'd like for somebody to do that math and add that on top of this then, which I'm, I'm no drainage expert, but I have concerns that we're talking about more drainage than an eighth of an inch because I've lived there many, many years and this never happened until a subdivision went in to the east of us. I used to have a fence right there where that mailbox is, uh, was. I and a number of neighbors who signed this packet have spent, I'm going to say hundreds of dollars, I'm probably being conservative, attempting to secure Paradise Place driveway right there where you're looking. Y'all to see it today. Repairing water lines that wash out, I'm not kidding you, at least annually. Flip back a page, I think it is. No, I'm wrong. Go forward. Page nine. I wish it only looked like that most of the time. In fact, last year in April, they broke. Have you ever run a two inch water line for about 24 hours while the water is receding and you don't know it's running? You know what your water bill is? See that mailbox there? Um, I built that mailbox and now it's about eight feet underground because I've had to fill right there. And again, that's about 100 feet west of the proposed subdivision. I've had to build a rock wall to be able to even backfill against. Two years ago, the Springdale Street Department secured Brown Road right there. See, go on past the mailbox and you see all of that that is washing away there. That actually went ahead and deteriorated on up underneath the road. And the city of Springdale came in and put rip rap, poured concrete over it, actually secured the city of Springdale Road right there. That's great. What that did though is that it pushed the water onto my water lines, um, actually making worse our water line problem there. But I understand you got to secure the road too. I've built and rebuilt more mailboxes than I can count. We've given up on ever having a street sign anymore. Got to get UPS there. I've retrieved my Orion trash receptacles that has washed down the stream. Every time it rains on trash day, I dread it. Having to wait to leave our home due to impassable water levels over our driveway, very, very frequent, and it's actually a little dangerous over Brown Road right there where the water is running over from where the proposed subdivision is. I'm going to share a little bit of detail, but in April of last year, Melissa and I, my wife, went down to retrieve the trash receptacle and the recycle receptacles for our neighborhood there. There is a number of houses up Paradise Place. It was pouring rain. We grabbed the cans and we pulled them up the hill across the road over toward this subdivision that we're talking about. And we look around and I had parked right here about where that vantage point is from where I took that picture. And the water had risen there so fast that it was almost running into the cab of my truck at that point. I holler at Melissa, we run back up there and another trash can is coming kind of down the road. She grabs the trash can, I grab the truck, and I'm waiting on her to get into the truck. And she doesn't show up. Raining extremely hard. I get out, I come around the other side of the truck and Melissa has been knocked off of her feet and is smashed up against my rear tire with water roaring over her head and she can't get up. I can't believe that I'm about to have my wife drowned in my driveway. That's the level of water that we deal with long before we build more houses there. And anybody that tells me that street improvements are not necessary for public interest and are inappropriate obviously wasn't there with me and her that morning. It's offensive almost. 100% of the water that comes down the hill from the proposed subdivision immediately overwhelms the inadequate facilities, I promise it does, and spills right into where our driveway is. Does all of that water come from Hawksview? The answer is no. I'm not saying that it does. It comes also from a lot of different areas. But all of the water that floods into this red karst zone comes in and goes through a, you might call it an opening into a drainage ditch that is about 10 feet wide. 100% of all water there accumulates right there. And I have to deal with it, we have to deal with it over and over and over. The city of Springdale Street Department, you all need to get out there because on down west of where the street has washed and y'all had put rip rap down there, it's about to collapse again. I wished I'd have brought pictures of that. And it's continuing to deteriorate where it hits down there along that road. we're asking that the commission deny the proposed variances, deny the waivers. Actually, ultimately, the goal is to remove the entire project from future consideration if this is the way that it has to be done. I'll be the very first one, and I think all 24 of us that signed this letter here would say this, is that if it were to be a development that was going to come in here and put a house there on that nine or so acres, or maybe a couple of houses, nobody's going to have a problem. It has nothing to do with us not wanting a, a new neighbor there. It has everything to do with the, the idea of making exceptions and skirting around all of the pre-established rules. That's what the frustrating part is to all of us. Because again, what is that going to look like in 10 years? When you add that type of structure into the type of divisions that we have out there The United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Services three times in writing advised against concentrated septic systems and karst habitats. I want to make sure you all have that documentation. Do, do you have that in your, in your letters and whatever? One other thing that was just brought to my attention today, and if I, I'm going to have to read this to you, that Pedro Art Apple is a fellow with the Fish and Wildlife Services. And this is a response, um, to a, a lady who is in our group. Do you know if they are planning to install a gravity sewer system to each lot with a drainage basin type lift station installed and stubbed out such that when gravity sewer is available, it will provide one point for connection to the new gravity sewer system? And I think that, would that be the step system you all, I think that I'm, my terminology is correct. If not, it would go against U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services recommendations to provide a strong reason for denial of the permit. Honestly, I've not had a lot of time to digest that, but I want to make sure that you understand that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services and that karst group are strongly advising you to consider the impact of what you're about to consider here. Further development without addressing drainage issues equals further drainage issues. The definition of insanity, keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. It's not going to get better with more drainage issues that we are personally responsible for, both from a monetary and a safety perspective. My dad used to tell me, son, it's like pushing a square peg into a round hole. Sometimes it won't go. And we feel like that statement very accurately represents our position on this. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. And thank you for the 24 you represent. Are there any other comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion, subject to comments for the
Let's do the rezoning first. And then we, we have to go over the, the comments for the preliminary plan. This would just be on the rezoning issue itself and it's a call for the vote.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Can I address some of Mr. Stevens' comments before we do this?
Sure.
Okay. And I'll try to be brief. Okay, and I'll try to be brief. I know Mr. Stevens means well and I understand what it's like to live in a neighborhood where the roads are substandard. So he certainly has my sympathy there, but I think he's misunderstood a few things. Uh, the septic system, the reason that you didn't hear this project a year and a half ago was because the planning staff asked us to triple check on the septic system requirements. Uh, and those have been approved by the Arkansas Department of Health. And there is no regulation in Springdale that says you can't have septic systems in this area. This is not, I guess on some maps it would be the red zone of the karst, but half of this property is not even in the karst recharge area. It's the north half that is on the fringe of it. Farther to the south, you've got Sharp's Quarry, which certainly would be a problem if it were in the recharge area, but it's not. So we've got some, some issues there. Uh, as far as blending in, yes. Mr. Stevens is correct, there are a number of nice homes here. We're not trying to match what's there. We're trying not to be, to, to find something that will fit. Generally speaking, uh, and if you want to think of it as transition zone, then you're welcome to think of it that way. We'd like to point out that one of the neighbors operates a commercial plumbing warehouse immediately adjacent to this property next to the wells that Mr. Stevens mentioned. And another one of the neighbors operates a warehouse for a window supply company in that neighborhood. Uh, we assume those have pre, been pre-existing uses since before this came into the city, but nevertheless, they are there. I think if you looked, you'd find there are a lot of gravel drives in this area. To say that gravel drives don't fit uh, seems a little bit unusual. Mr. Stevens addressed old houses that have been moved in and wanted to know why they're moved. Uh, those of you who are familiar with development in Springdale know that you have a prime commercial piece of property on a city street that used to be very narrow. Now it's five lanes. Uh, somebody who doesn't want the old house there, they want to build something on that lot. So normally they tear it down, put all the stuff into a dumpster and it goes to the landfill. Uh, it's routine to move houses. If you know Dave Mars in Bentonville, the house he lives in and shows on the front of his TV show was moved to his property because it's a good use of structures that are still sound and solid. They just can't stay where they are. They don't fit in that neighborhood anymore. Uh, the houses will be redone. Uh, we had some pictures at one point to show you, uh, the owners work on redoing these houses inside and out. We're not talking about throwing, I, there was, there was concern earlier because there was a house that was moved in by this owner to an adjoining piece of property, one house on 10 acres, I think it was. Uh, and complaints were made because, well, when they moved it in, it looked ugly. It looked like a mangy dog. Well, if you've ever moved a house that had rock on the outside of it, you have to peel that off because the rock won't move. And yes, the house doesn't look like much till you get it set on the foundation and get the new exterior cladding on it. Then it looks, it actually, if you see the house today, it looks pretty nice. So there are some things. This was tabled a month ago because there was concern from the planning staff that our development plan was not nearly thorough enough. So I don't know that the development has changed a lot. We did as a result of a meeting, uh, the, uh, yeah, your, your in-between meeting with the planning commission. It was suggested that we needed to have planning area because that is a PUD requirement. So the plat changed to put, uh, the public area in there. And so that did change in that respect. With regard to the drainage along Brown Road, much of what Mr. Stevens has described is existing problems. This piece of property does not and will not generate tens of thousands of cubic feet per second to knock you off your feet and pin you under the truck. It's not that big. There is a big drainage area that goes to that ditch along Brown Road. But it's not, the, the area, this is only a very small fraction of the area that drains to that ditch. We did not ask for an exception to placing a culvert, uh, under the drive, under the entrance road on Brown Road. We did ask for a waiver from improving Brown Road along a distance of 50 feet, which is our frontage. Improving Brown Road for 50 feet will not serve the public interest. It won't do any good. It won't address any problems. In fact, it generates a lot of problems. And one of those problems is if we have to widen Brown Road, we have to put the culvert past the widening. And that means we're going to have to move that ditch onto the people's properties on both sides. So our request was to work with the engineering department to come up with a solution that didn't make it necessary to grade on other people's property to relocate a very large drainage ditch in order to install 50 feet of roadway improvements. I think those are the, the high points of the deal. We do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, my name's Jeff Wolf, 88, 99 East Brown Road. Um, this subdivision is directly behind my house.
Could you state your name again, please?
Jeff Wolf.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, matter of fact, we're separated by fence line. I have no issues with subdivisions like Todd said, if they're done properly. My fear is, is the, the homework hasn't been done necessarily on the runoff that he's, that he's experienced, that I experienced. Um, and his comment about us not seeing the kind of flooding that we have, that I've been there since 2000, 2001. Um, so probably one of the longest residences there. And I've not seen the level of flooding in that area. Uh, like I have the last 10 years, just unbelievable the amount of water that's coming from other subdivisions. So I don't know if the engineers missed it on where and how much water and where that was going to run, but it's absolutely unbelievable. My front yard now gets absolutely flooded and all of that water is coming from the top of that hill. Every bit of it. And there's nothing there right now. We have the quote unquote 100-year floods that we've had in the past three or four years, right? So we used to call it a 100-year flood. Now we get them once a year, maybe twice a year. The side of my house is a, is a river, uh, which is going to be the west side. Never used to see that, you know, we get these huge rains, I get it, you know, maybe once in a lifetime, but we've seen several of them in the last couple of years. Again, my front yard becomes nothing but a, a river, a lake. And I don't know how many times I repaired my driveway. I understand, um, that the gentleman, um, had mentioned something about gravel driveways. Well, I've been there for 22 years. Um, it was a very rural community. Um, we didn't have the covenances and things like that out there. So I've been able to get away with my gravel driveway, right? And I get it, but my biggest concern, getting back to what Todd was talking about, is where in the world is this water going to go? When we had hard roofs, we have roof surfaces, that's got to be, um, funneled into specific areas and it's going to go right in back of my house. It has to. It has to, because that's the only place it can drain and it's the place it does drain right now. Um, have, have we, have we done our homework to direct that water somewhere else? If they do, it's going to be directed to someone else's property. The drainage is not there. And, uh, again, we're going to feel the brunt of it. Right now, you know, I've got my house probably 18 to 20 inches off the grade of the back. Under hard rains, I'm about two or three inches of coming in my floor plates on a hard rain. I've got French drains, I've got all the necessary things done properly, but the water is a problem. And, uh, I don't think anybody has seen it like we've seen it because nobody in this room probably lives there and, and gets to see it. So it is a very huge concern of mine. The housing, the streets, the neighbors, that's not an issue. What makes me nervous is making sure that we've done our homework. So I'm not getting flooded on these quote unquote 100-year rains or these lifetime crazy flood rains that we get. Cause we're going to continue to get them, I feel like, for whatever reason. Uh, but it is a crazy, crazy issue, the amount of water that comes off that hill with nothing there right now, but just field and natural grass. So that's what I need to say about that. It's, it's a huge concern of mine is, is the water and the flooding, which I could see coming. Because I've already seen it from the subdivisions that got built down further on, uh, East Brown Road. It's coming from Spring Creek, the subdivision, all that water's been directed towards us and here it comes. And it's a major issue and has been for several years now. So anyway, I'd just like you guys to take that into consideration. Maybe we need to take a re-look at our drainage situation in that area because it is a problem and it will continue to be a massive problem with more structures we put out there. That's all I got for this evening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now we're going to, uh, guess vote on the rezon.
Call for the
Be a call for the vote? To the commission? Call for the vote? Call for Mr. Culver?
Cloud? Compton?
No.
Culver?
No.
David?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker? Peters? Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
No.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision. You have to file that appeal within 15 days. Uh, you have to indicate why you think the planning commission's decision was an error. You have to notify the adjacent property owners. And it will be placed on the agenda following that submission. I can tell you, it won't be heard before the second meeting because we have to have time to prepare the minutes. And we do have verbatim of this, so it won't be next week at the early or it would be the second meeting this month. If you file that appeal within 15 days.
Very well, thank you.
So we don't have
Thank you.
The preliminary plate goes away.
We'll be seeing T 2203 or W 2205 or W 2206. Next is L 22 dash 12 Bright Haven Learning Center, 1838 South 48th Street. Variance is 22 dash 20, 22 dash 21. Parking space is reduced to from 70 to 50. 22 dash 21 is variance of commercial designs, standards. A, facade and exterior wall, B, roofs, C, foundation landscaping. And W 2204 waiver trail requirement presented by Earth Plan Design Alternatives.
My name is James Gertz with EDA, here to present this project. Uh, be happy to answer any questions you have on it. It's a children's learning standard, daycare. Uh, we're just wanting to bring it to the city.
Stack comments?
Other than standard comments, we have, uh, due to project being located on the west side of a major collector, an eight-foot minimum, uh, multi-use side
You need to pull that mic up a little bit, cause your heart is strained.
Due to the project being located on the west side of a major collector, a minimum eight-foot multi-use sidewalk is required for which a waiver has been requested. Need to show required parking in the table featuring provided parking. A variance has been requested to decrease total number of provided parking spaces. Foundation landscaping requirement, uh, variance has been requested. Roof lines shall be varied with a change in height every 100 linear feet in the building length, a variance has been requested.
Can we go to the elevations too, just a minute, once Katie does hers?
Engineering comments, um, correct the commercial drive detail. Needs to show concrete to the right-of-way line. Add a note that the pond shall be sodded to the 100-year water surface elevation. Submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report to engineering and apply for your grading permit.
James, you want to talk about the reason for the, uh, reduced number of parking spaces and the other variances?
Yes. The reason for the parking reduction is this is a daycare center. They drive up and they pick up their kids. Uh, we have loading queue zones, excuse me, loading queue zones at the front of the building. Uh, parents wait, the kids are run out and they're released to the parents and they drive off. So we're requesting a reduction of 20 spots. Uh, we're meeting the requirements for the employees on the site. Uh, it's just coming down to the number of kids ratio that the code requires. And I have Branson here, the architect, to discuss the architectural request.
Branson Evans with Level Five Architecture. And the architectural requests come from the 100 feet, uh, breaks in the roof and the walls. The two, basically the three sides we have that issue on is the north, the west and the south side. As you can see on the site plan, if you go back a few, it's a real skinny lot and we're setting the buildings real far back. It's a C2 to the south that is just as deep as this lot. And then to the north of that is, is that half of them? Okay, it's a hotel to the north of that and an extended state to the west of it. Uh, we're only, we're only exceeding the 100 feet, uh, six feet, I think at the most. So it's real, we're real, real close. Uh, but it, it's just the neighbors, nobody else is going to see those sides of that building really. So we're just asking for a variance on that to keep us from having to add complex to the floor plan and the roof.
And the walls have breaks in them in that they have outside doors along that wall. It's just the roof line that you're asking for the variance.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, talk about the, uh, foundational landscaping. You have the same amount of landscaping on the site as would be required to meet the foundation. It's just in different locations.
Yes, we've reallocated it around, what we have are HVAC units and play areas along the building. And so what we've done is relocated that to the front, to the entrance, uh, along some of the sides. We do have a privacy fence along the back that would hide that landscaping, foundation landscaping anyways. So, uh, and then we also have our perimeter landscaping.
And that's to keep the kids?
To keep the kids in, yes.
The kids inside, inside the fence, okay? You don't want them wandering all over the neighborhood. Uh, and you have detention in the front.
We do.
So it's not a problem with the kids because it, and you landscaped around it.
Yes.
The proper, uh, easement around the top and the waiver of the trail requirements. The sidewalk was improved when the street was improved.
Correct.
Several years ago, and they're asking not to widen it. It's an eight-foot sidewalk already.
It's a five-foot sidewalk.
It's a five-foot sidewalk. And with the new master street plan, it's required to be a 10-foot on the west side, but this, this street improvement was done many, many years ago when the street was improved. There's sidewalks on both sides.
And there's also a culvert at our north east corner that's partially on this, that culvert would have to be extended to allow for that sidewalk to go across.
And the sidewalk is continuous all the way from 412 to
Correct. It crosses that culvert already.
This would be one area that it would be widened out in that stretch.
Any comments from the audience? Commission, be a call for the vote. I guess we're going to just
I have a question about the sidewalk. This is Mark, Commissioner.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So it's currently five foot wide and our land master plan or whatever says it needs to be what?
It needs to be 10-foot on the west side of major streets like this and it would have to be double the size of
What it's currently is?
Yeah.
And so they're asking for a waiver for that?
It would have to be narrowed back down to connect with the existing sidewalks.
Thank you.
Sorry, another question. On the variance to go from 70 to 50, where are those spaces, the 20 spaces would have been, where are your plans to do with that?
Uh, basically we're reducing the parking and shifting it to the west.
So will that still be paved or?
Oh, no, it, I've reconfigured the detention pond slightly to, to fit in that area, but it'll be open space, grass detention area.
And, and you have stacking lanes that allows for how many cars to be stacked in that lane?
Uh, 15.
Okay, so people pull up, their, their kids come out and get in the car, so they real, they never really park. So technically you've got room for 15 more cars in that loading area, so.
And to that point, I've allocated 15, but that ends about where our parking stalls are. It can continue down and then go out our driveway to 48th Street if we needed to account for more. But I just didn't do the accounting on that.
But you don't see anything that we're required to back up on the street?
No, no.
We don't want, we don't, the stacking cars backing up on
Exactly.
48th Street. You got plenty of room in there. We don't stack up on the street. Right, okay.
And as far as the, um, facade and exterior, I was trying to follow that. We're talking about a minimal, I, I believe we're talking about a minimal.
It's, it's a roof line break. The walls and stuff meet all the requirements because you got that doors and windows, the materials are acceptable. It's just the roof line itself doesn't have a break in it and it's six foot over the, it's 106 feet, correct?
Yes.
So it's not twice that long. It doesn't have any breaks.
And did we cover the trail require, I heard a little bit about sidewalks, but I was having
It already has a five-foot sidewalk. The requirement would be to widen it to 10 feet in this small area. So that's why they're asking for that waiver.
Okay, and the waiver should go from 10 to 5?
The waiver would leave it just like it is at five feet, yes, if it's approved, yes.
Is there enough right of way for a 10-foot trail to go in there?
I don't think so, because I think this sidewalk was put at one foot behind the
Correct.
The right-of-way. So we'd have to have a sidewalk easement to widen it in order to be able to do that additional, because that's how we built streets.
So, so I guess I don't have a problem with not doing a trail right now, but I sure would like to retain enough easement so that we could do a trail down there if that becomes an issue, you know? It's an area around hotels.
Yeah.
People need to walk places to go to restaurants, et cetera. I, I just don't want to make it so we can't.
Would there be the possibility of dedicating that additional?
That's not, that's not a problem. Uh, it's already full of utilities. That's not a, that's not a problem. Uh, it's already full of utilities, it's out there anyways.
You can't build anything out. Your detention pond doesn't encroach upon it or anything like that?
No.
Okay, so we could add that. You would, you would donate the additional ri- right-of-way or sidewalk easement with a separate document?
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay. Does that help me?
Yeah, it, that doesn't, it makes it so we can do it in the future if it becomes a good idea.
If we're gonna do the waivers, you want to do them together? Be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for Mr. Covert.
Okay, for, for all of them, the, the, the parking and then the commercial design, okay?
And the waiver.
And you're gonna do the waiver too?
You're gonna?
Yeah.
All together. Okay, that sounds good. Um, Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Vote passes nine-zero.
And we need a motion to approve the large-scale subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Peters, second by Mr. David.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to take a break, a quick break before we do that?
We can do that.
Six-thirty. Yeah.
We're gonna have a ten, ten-minute break? Okay, we have everybody back, so let's, let's call this back to order. Next we'll be hearing rezonings. The first rezoning is going to be R twenty-two fourteen Elmdale Lake LLC. Eighty-six seventy-four to eighty-six thirty-two West Gibbs Row, A-one to SF-one presented by Sand Creek Engineering and Land Surveying.
I'm Anthony Fur with Sand Creek Engineering. Uh, we're requesting a zone, rezone this property of eighty-nine point six-six acres to, uh, from A-one to SF-one. I'm here to answer any questions y'all might have.
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval. Uh, protect positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size, encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Any comments from the audience? Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Betty Bowen.
Okay, we'll need to go up to, we'll need to go up to the mic and.
I'm Betty Bowen and I own the property, I guess you would say below this property. A good deal of it on the bottom part, uh, along Lake Road.
You have an a- address number?
What?
Do you have an address number?
I don't think it has an address.
Just the property? Okay.
I don't have a number for it.
Okay. Comments?
And I, um, uh, wondered about the drainage and about the easements.
Okay, tonight all we're talking about is whether or not it's appropriate use for single-family homes. When they get ready to develop, they will come back with a subdivision, uh, preliminary plat that show how all to be laid out, how all the drainage is to be taken care of, how the access is supposed to, to be addressed and all the easements. But we don't have that information tonight because we're just rezoning it from agricultural to SF-one for single-family homes.
Okay, so it's just for rezoning?
Yes, it's just for rezoning tonight. Yes.
All right. And so when will that meeting be?
Uh, well, they have to submit the preliminary plat. It has to go through technical plat review. When we get through the process and are, think that everything has been addressed, it won't be before next month. And I can't guarantee you that it's going to be next month because there's, this is an interesting piece of property that's going to take some design work. And I know they're working on it. We've had some preliminary meetings and they're, they're working on it. Are you guys trying to submit it by the end of the, by the end of the year? I mean, by the end of the month? Is that the plan? Okay, they will, they will notify you again by, by certified mail when the preliminary plat is coming before the planning commission, okay?
All right, okay.
Yes, Eva Mosher, two-one-six-nine-four South Highway one-twelve. And I'm to the west of that property. And this is going to just be a comment for the developers or the planners that drainage is a significant issue in that area. It sits at the top of the hill. My property is on the downhill side of that development and, uh, the drainage over the last, I would say, five to eight years has increased significantly to where I, I now have a canyon, not quite Grand Canyon, but a canyon that comes directly from that property down by my barn that puts a hazard to my horses. It's probably about five foot by six foot now. Five foot deep, six foot wide. And, excuse me, so, you know, any, any kind of development there, I might add the positive. I'm a real estate broker and, uh, inventory is short. So, right now, helping buyers is like the Hunger Games. So having new houses is not a negative. How they handle drainage is of utmost importance because as the development happens in that area, I also have a drainage area across the front of my house on four-tw- on one-twelve. And, um, we used to have drainage that ran in that, in that ditch one to two times a year, tops if we had just unreasonable rains and flooding elsewhere. Now it, it, it floods every time it rains. So anything that's going to go on top of that hill, we don't want, uh, the barn to wash away. And we don't want it to impede, um, erosion on the hill and, and, uh, and be a problem for the homes that are in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Thomas, two-one-seven-four-zero, South Highway one-twelve. I'm two doors down from Ms. Mosher. Ironically, I'm a real estate broker as well. And while I would love to have homes to sell, um, I don't want them in my backyard per se, but I will echo all the sentiment that's been shared in regards to drainage. Um, I've only lived at this property for two years, but I did my homework before buying it. And I have been trapped in that property twice in two years because of water. The other issue is with the, I see it's a hundred and sixteen proposed new families at this place. I would assume they're going to get out on Gibbs Road because it's most convenient. And if you've ever tried to do that, it is taking your life into your own hands because it's A, a blind curve. And then the other issue is just sheer infrastructure and traffic. If you've ever come westbound now that they have the new Chick-fil-A, the light right there on Gene George, you will sit through that at least three or four more cycles than normal. So adding that many more spaces to come out onto Gibbs Road on a road that's going to get, I understand, widened in the next couple of years anyway, I just think would be a disaster at this point. So just, um, you know, maybe consider thirty or forty lots and a nice park beside the lake to let those families enjoy that green space instead of just keep cramming and cramming extra houses there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Staff comments? We already did that?
Already did that.
To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for, uh, Mr. Compton, Dr. Compton.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Vote passes nine-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Next is R twenty-two fifteen Hector Martinez, Jose A. Gonzalez, and Isidro Martinez, two-five-five North, two-five-five-three North Thompson Street. Seat, rezone from C-two to I-one presented by Elemental Properties LLC and Kale Kaye Bowling.
Good evening, Kale Bowling, uh, here on behalf of Elemental Properties and, uh, Nex Air. Um, we've submitted this petition to rezone from C-two to I-one. Uh, I, I, I trust that you all have, uh, received a copy of my letter that sets forth, um, the, the applicant's plan. I just wanted to point out a couple of additional things that aren't in that letter. Um, this property is a, a, about two and a half acres, uh, vacant parcel on North Thompson Road. It is, as best I can tell, been vacant and, and listed on the market for sale for a little over two years. And so, um, what Elemental and, and Nex Air ultimately want to do is come in, uh, they've got a, a facility currently in Tawny Town. They would like to, um, relocate that facility, expand it just a bit and bring it to Springdale, uh, on this proposed track. You can see, um, some exam, uh, exemplary facilities, uh, on your screens right now. Their, uh, uh, current operation has only about three employees at this facility. They would expand that to about fifteen. Um, and I do have a, a client representative who is, uh, Patrick Galfin. He's available on Zoom. For any technical questions that y'all might have about their operation that I can't answer because I.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Patrick Galfin.
And there's Patrick. So, um, we're happy to answer any questions that, that you all have at this time.
Staff comments?
Okay, first let me remind you, when we rezon property, we're not rezoning for this particular client. Once the property is rezoned, anything that is allowed in that zone can go in this zone. So we're really talking about the need for the property to go from A, C-two to a, or a, whatever it is now, C-two to I-one. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for this property. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan. It's not recommended for approval. What my suggestion would be that you downgrade this request to a C-five, which would be more in keeping with what's in that area. And then they could apply for a conditional use for a use unit twenty-five. And then we would look at the specific operations of that business at that location. But I just don't think it's in the city's best interest to rezon that property to industrial use at this time.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Mueller.
No.
Parker.
No.
Peters.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Austin.
No.
Cloud.
No.
Compton.
No.
Covert.
No.
David.
No.
Vote.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision. You have to, uh, you have to file that appeal within fifteen days indicating why you think the planning commission's decision is an error. You have to notify the adjacent, adjacent property owners again. And it will not be heard until the last meeting or the fourth Tuesday. Uh, if you want to talk about the possibilities of going to C-five and conditional use, just call my office and we can sit down and kind of go through that in the future, okay?
Next we have R twenty-two dash sixteen Joseph and Corinne Hart, five-five-seven-three Elm Springs Road. Rezone A-one to SF-one presented by Joseph and Corinne Hart.
Thank you. Uh, I reside at fifty-five thirty-one, the property just to the east of this property in question. And these were originally one-acre lots, uh, A-one, uh, long before City of Springdale annexed it. And what you're looking at there is where the new roundabout is. And the city took, uh, all but point six-four of that one-acre lot in question, uh, fifty-five seventy-three. And in the midst of all of this, uh, my wife and I ended up with that lot adjacent to our property. And our property is also A-one. And what's happened is, uh, to, with A-one, the only thing you can do with it is, uh, you can put a house on A-one if there's one acre. Well, there's no longer an acre there. And we have no immediate plans to build on it. But in the event that we did, uh, it would have to be a single-family one. So that's what our proposal is tonight.
Staff comments?
Okay, are you proposing to rezon the, the piece you obtained from the city and your existing, where your house is now, or just the piece from the city?
Just the piece from the city.
Okay, just the piece from the city. Okay, the, uh, comprehensive land use plan recommends commercial use for that, uh, location. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan. It's not recommended for approval. However, an SF-one zone, you know, has its limitations. I, I don't know that it creates a bad situation at this location. I, I don't see it being developed as residential property in the future. But even though it's contrary, it probably would be okay for it to go SF-one. I don't know. Do you have enough buildable area with what's there to put a house on it and meet the setbacks of two fronts and?
Uh, yes, it would, it would be a, a small footprint of a house if we do it. It's just that right now the property is, you know, not usable for anything else and just a big yard. And, and as far as commercial use, that roundabout that comes across the corner, uh, is a one-direction road. It's like a bypass for the roundabout. And a lot of folks think, hey, it's prime commercial property, but you can't hardly even get to the property, uh, off the street.
Well, and that's why I ask, is it, are you doing just the piece that you acquired from the city or your house too? That piece standing by itself is probably, you know, it could be extended to the south. Uh, the record here shows that it's still owned by the city. I, we did some research. The deed has been filed. We have a filed copy of the, of the sale to you and it hasn't been recorded or, I mean, it's been recorded, but it hasn't been updated on the county's information. I can't, I can't explain why. It's just not.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. Peters? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, can you go back to that previous drawing? It shows it to be. Yeah, I think it is.
Was it point three-six? Is that what's left?
No, it's point six, uh, four, I think. And the city must have taken in three, I mean, point three-something.
Yeah. It does. Yeah, it does. Yep, there's the land use plan, the slide that you see. They shows what the, all that. And the other side of the street is outside the city limits, so. Yes, it's on day one.
Is there any reason just?
You need to turn your mic off.
Is there any reason in particular you're not rezoning three-three, five-five-three-one also?
I, I don't see any advantage to it. Uh, I mean, we're going to stay there, so, um, it's a single-family dwelling anyway, so we, we have no, any reason to change it.
Continuity is the only thing I can think of. Cause it's more, more like a spot zoning, you know, if we go in and just change just this little, this little one. I mean, I understand the reason too. You don't need to, so.
Yeah, we have a call for, Mr. Peters?
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
No.
Passes eight-one.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Next we have R twenty-two dash sixteen. Uh, we just did that one, sorry. We'll go, we'll go down to R twenty-two dash twenty, two-sixty-four Trailers LLC. Twenty thirteen North Old Missouri Road, rezone I, I-one to C-six presented by Jason Ingles.
Jason Ingles with Expedient Civil Engineering. Uh, this particular client owns, uh, an existing business in Lowell, Arkansas, and they're wishing to relocate their business here. And with the help of Chris, Patsy Christie, uh, rather than trying to do a conditional use on this property, I think it was recommended that we downzone to a C-six that would allow open display commercial of the trailers out front along that major busy highway. That's what we're asking this board tonight.
Any comments?
Okay, remember, we're not rezoning for that particular use, even though we have a law that's getting.
Correct.
But.
Correct.
The land use plan does indicate a lot of industrial use, but with the change in the Highway two-sixty-five situation in that entire area, we're seeing a little bit of change in that whole area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies is recommended for approval. Prevent the city's economic base and tax structure to do promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development. Encourage the development of neighborhood commuting and regional centers.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. Culver?
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th.
Thank you.
Next, we have R22-21, Youth Bridge Properties Incorporated, Jacobs Crossing, southeast corner of George Anderson Road and Don Tyson Parkway. Also have a. Can you, can you wait just a minute, please? Can you just wait just a minute, please? Thank you. Okay. We also have a preliminary plat, 2205, presented by ESI.
I guess Blay Murray with Engineering Services representing this project tonight. So yeah, as you just said, we're asking for a rezone on this as well as a preliminary plat. It's currently zoned P1 and requesting SF3. Little bit of confusion there in the packet. It does say SF3 on, on the items that matter, but it does say SF1 on one of, one of the sheets in there, and I think some of the tables reference.
They got corrected.
It did?
That one was my fault.
Okay.
I had this problem with figuring out which was, it said two and it said three and one was done.
Okay.
We got them corrected already.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're good. So we're asking to, to get SF3 on this. We're proposing a subdivision with 136 lots, kind of centered on a drainage way. There's going to be some nice open space. I think it's, I think it's a pretty, pretty good subdivision, so happy to try to answer any questions y'all have.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium or low density residential use for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. The rezoning request protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily to be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, environmental factors, ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. And this, this zone in classification allows for six units per area.
Okay, now we'll hear comments from the audience.
I'm James Robinson. I live at 4101 George Anderson Road. My concern about this building in this area is the water problem. Because when they come in there and do this, this is going to put all the water. I live, my property is on the west side, or south side of it. So that's going to drain all that water over on me, and I want to know how they're going to control that. I have no problem with them building on it as long as they take care of the water problem. But I don't want to have a flooded water problem, just like this gentleman earlier talked about. And I'd also like to know what kind of homes they're going to build on there and the size of them. And if they're going to just be thrown together or if they're going to be put on by a good builder.
Okay, let me, let me address some of those issues starting at the beginning then. This is just to rezone it to single-family homes. That's all I can put on a lot size that is a minimum lot size, 60 foot of frontage, 7,000 square feet per lot. We do not have any standards that require a certain size house to be built there, but it has to meet the setbacks on those lots. We don't have design standards for single-family homes either. It is just, it can be single-family. Now, we have a preliminary plat for this that will show how the drainage is being taken care of. They are proposing a detention pond on the southeast corner of this property, which would be just north of you for all of the drainage to go to that detention pond and allow it to be released at the same rate as if no development had occurred. They will be taking the other pond that's on there out, and all of that will drain to that corner. And we'll look at that in just a minute. But it's single-family homes, and that's all we can tell you. We also can't tell you who the developer is because that's not something we regulate either with the zoning question or with the subdivision proposal, either one.
Are they, will it be on a sewer system or will it be on septic?
No, it'll be on a sewer system.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be on a sewer system with city water, yes.
Okay, well, my concern is, is what they're going to do with the water. I'd like to meet with and see how they're going to do this.
Okay, you'll see the, the picture that's up on the screen shows the detention at the southeast corner of that piece of property.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay. The, sorry. We can only have eight mics on at a time, and so I got to turn mine off from time to time so everybody else can talk. The detention, they're putting a detention pond in the southeast, I mean, yes, southeast corner of this piece of property, which is just, just to the north of your property. All of the water will drain to that location, be halted in that location, and it will be released at a rate that is not, exceeds what it does today. That's the way it's designed.
I can't understand.
Well, we'll just have to sit down and talk to you about it in just a little bit, okay? But detention has been, or the drainage has been addressed on their plan, okay? Can one of you guys get with him and show him? Does somebody have a drawing they can show him up there close? Okay, this gentleman right here will show you what it looks like, okay? If you guys don't mind, if you'll move on over so we can continue, because right now we're just doing the zoning, not, not the preliminary plat yet. Yeah, okay?
Any other comments from the audience? Okay, this will be a call for the vote to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. Cloud? No, Mr. Howard?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 26th. Now, we'll talk about the Jacobs Crossings preliminary plat that's there. And who's doing the comments? Ricky doing the comments on that? You and Katie? Okay.
We have only standard comments.
Okay, can you kind of elaborate on that just a little bit so we know what we're talking about? Not everybody's going to understand what standard comments mean. Just generally, things that we see on every plat?
Just making sure that all of the utility companies and other city departments' comments have been addressed. Easements must be obtained prior to approval of construction plans. Other than that, in terms of the plats themselves, cosmetic things such as listing all deviations or variances, waivers and so on by their project number given to them by the Springdale Planning Department.
Okay. And Katie's going to address the engineering questions.
Okay, we would recommend only one entrance onto Don Tyson where the median cut is. And I know we've reduced down to three entrances on Don Tyson, but we'd really like to just see it where the median cut is to reduce traffic in that area. The low-volume local street section shows street trees in the green space. This plan shows each lot having a tree, and so we were just wondering if maybe those could be moved to the green space to match that street section. We would like to see a sidewalk connection from the dead end on the west side onto George Anderson. Need to see minimum finished floor elevations for all lots that are adjacent to drainageways and colluding that existing stream. We would like to see off-site drainage easements and a little bit more information about where the drainage is going to go once it leaves the property. And show trees in the landscape islands in between the parking lanes. Some of them appear to have conflicts with junction boxes and storm inlets that might need to be adjusted. And then provide details for drainage, signage, lighting, and the street sections.
Okay, Katie, I need to ask you a question about eliminating one access point or making those right in, right out only?
We would prefer they be eliminated. We only have the one at, right in the middle, onto Don Tyson.
Okay, so that takes a reconfiguration of the preliminary plat if that's what you're going to do. Was that a comment that was made previously?
Yes.
Okay.
And one, and that street on the west side used to go all the way up, and that was cut off, but we still have three. It isn't, I don't believe it's an ordinance. It's a recommendation just to help with the traffic. Or if they wanted to make them right in, right out, that might be a good idea as well.
Well, right in, right out would allow them still to have access.
I mean, they, it will have to be right in, right out.
Yes, it will have to be right in, right out because there's no median break. Okay, what about this lot that has the very narrow frontage on that public street that looks like a tandem lot? Does it have the minimum lot frontage?
I think they showed it as a POA lot.
Yes, ma'am, on the Reese Middle, that's a POA lot. We might revisit that later, but that, that's, that was our plan right now, is just to have that as green space.
Okay. So it needs to show on the preliminary plat as common area, and that's an access easement, not necessarily a lot frontage?
Well, it does have lot frontage. It's only like 20 feet wide, though, that little sliver.
Well, the minimum lot size has to have a minimum frontage on a public street, or you got to ask for a tandem lot split.
Right, for, for a buildable lot, this is a non-buildable lot.
Okay, then it needs to be shown that way, because what I'm looking at doesn't show it as a non-buildable lot. So that technically is an access easement across there to a, to common area. And the only way you can get to it is from that location.
Excuse me?
Okay. And are you putting in subdivision signs, and if so, where are they?
That'll be during construction plans, we'll give it to the developer and see where they want it. They would be located along Don Tyson if there were any. I don't know the material type, but they'll be outside of Springdale Water and general utility easements.
Okay, I'm not so much worried about that as to, are they going to be on common property as well?
Yes, yeah, if, if there are any.
Okay, and then we will need a POA document to see how that common area is going to be taken care of.
Sure.
If that's what it is, because I haven't seen one.
That's pretty standard for us to turn in one with the construction process, so.
Okay, okay. And there's no access easements on the backside of any of those lots to get to that common area, if that's what it's going to become?
Not currently, but that, that is a good point. That's something we'll add prior to final plat.
Well, you're asking us to approve a preliminary plat for you to go to construction, and now we're already making changes. Are you asking to leave it just like it is with right in, right outs and no change to the street layout?
This is, this is the layout that we want. All those other things are, are very minor, like the access easement. That's something that can easily be addressed during the construction process, which is, I mean, we do that on tons of projects all the time, so.
Yeah, and we have some that really have some concern when we get things built and there's not enough room for an access easement between there.
This, this subdivision, sorry, this subdivision meets all codes and requirements, including the separation distance between the curb cuts on Don Tyson. There is two right in only and right out only, and then there's one at the median cut, so. This is the layout that our client desires.
Katie, do you have any other concerns, knowing that that's the way it's going to stay?
The only thing is, we haven't seen any plans for where the drainage from the pond goes to. We see kind of that stub out for the pipe, but I didn't see any detail for that.
That's actually an existing box culvert that drains straight south from there into a drainage system.
That's an existing pond?
Yes, well, the, the pond's not, the box is.
No, yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Okay, that clears things up a little bit.
Katie, does it clear it up 100%? Do we have any drainage questions? Because we just had a gentleman who said his only.
Because if, if that was not existing, I would say we would need to have easements across those owner's property, and they will have to give permission for that drainage to go across their property. If it's existing, then that would have already been taken care of. Other than that, we would, we will need to see drainage easements across those properties.
So the drainage study didn't address that, that's why you're still asking those questions?
I did not see those details, no.
Okay.
Hey, Katie, sorry. When you say you did not see those details, can you say, what does that mean?
I did not, like, I didn't, I don't think there, to be honest, I don't know that there is an existing box there. I hadn't seen that on our map.
Brian is here, and he can speak to it more clearly, but he was part of the team that installed that, that box culvert, so. He actually was able to find it in like two seconds because he designed it, so.
Do you know how far south it goes?
I can get you that real quick.
Okay. Because it will have to cross, I think, two properties before it gets to the creek. And it's, it's pretty flat without a defined channel. If it were to release right at that corner, it would need a bit, it would need some way to get down to the creek. If there's an existing box, then that would take away that concern.
So if drainage is the buzzword tonight, I think we need to know for sure what's going on with the drainage.
Were those comments made on technical plat about the drainage then?
It was shown differently on the original submission. It just like exited right on the property line, I believe. But why isn't it shown in our stormwater network?
I don't know that one.
Was it part of this subdivision development?
No, Jason, can you speak to that?
Hi, Jason Apple, ESI. Yeah, there, there currently is a box culvert from like Mr. Anderson's property to the south, to the creek network. And I think it crossed over. It was installed with the Serenity Project, and those easements were acquired. We can provide those to staff at, you know, as soon as we can after this meeting. But that, that storm network is there, and it does go to the creek.
I guess I'll ask one more time. Katie, how confident are you in letting this move forward? Because I'm going to base a vote on how comfortable you feel with what you've been told in moving forward. I do not feel like it's smart to move forward if we don't have this question answered.
And I'll say.
100%.
There seems to be a lot of activity up there, just makes me uncomfortable.
Yeah, our, the city's stormwater network doesn't show this box culvert. We would have to look at the Serenity subdivision plats, or if there was a survey done that shows that, that's what we would need to see.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, this will be a motion.
Hey, Katie, are you okay with having three roads on Don Tyson? Heard you say otherwise, three exits.
Engineering would rather not have three exits onto Don Tyson.
Neither would I.
So the quick question I have is, based on what you've heard with the concerns that we have about the roads and the drainage, would you prefer to table this and bring this back as opposed to us voting on it in its current condition? Or would you like us to go ahead and vote on it currently?
I'd like to try to answer some of y'all's questions first and see if we can work things out a little bit prior to making that decision.
We're trying to pull up this plat for the Serenity subdivision and see if it shows that box culvert.
That's the thing, I think the questions are, the questions are, you don't need to clarify anything for us. Clarify stuff with us, you need to clarify it with Katie.
I, I guess the, the curb cut request, I mean, it meets code, so I don't really understand what the, what the discussion is on that. We're, we're allowed, we're allowed the curb cuts because we have the separation. So I mean, the drainage, I think we're greatly improving that right now.
Is this what we're looking at here?
Katie, have y'all done some traffic analysis to indicate you wouldn't want right in, right out along there?
I'm sorry, say that again, Patsy.
Have y'all done some traffic analysis on this section of Don Tyson that supports the fact that you don't want any? And right in and right out doesn't work?
No, it's just a preference so that we have both ways at the median cut.
Well.
Right, it was a recommendation.
Preference is one thing. That kind of puts the planning commission in a bad position if you don't have any, anything to support the preference that engineering has for it to be only one access point. Because one access point means this whole thing's got to be redesigned. That's a major, that's a major issue. And then drainage, I'm like, you have a little bit of concern, because if that was an issue, why are we here tonight? And you don't know the answer to where that drainage structure goes, if that's what they were proposing. And you said it's changed.
So it looks like the final plat for the Serenity subdivision does show a junction box and a box culvert in that location. I don't believe that was shown in the original plat that was submitted. It was shown in the second submittal that we're looking at right now. But I didn't have any details about how big that box culvert was, where it exactly it drained to. And since for some reason it's not included in our stormwater network, it was kind of an unknown.
So now you have it showing on a, on a drawing, but you still don't know what size it is and where it drains to?
Besides what is shown on this plat.
Okay.
I can address that. I actually put it in, so.
Well, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying we're kind of at a strange position, and that's the question you guys are asking. Yep.
So.
When you resubmitted with this change, did you submit an amendment to the drainage report that shows that you are going to this existing culvert and the size of it and it's in their revised drainage analysis with this change?
Yes, it's on the drainage area maps, it shows it.
Okay, Katie, did you look at those?
Well, and a preliminary plat, I mean, by definition does not, I mean, we've still gotta turn in plans and specifications meeting all the city code that the engineering and planning staff both approve. So, I mean, a preliminary plat usually does not include highly detailed drainage plans.
No, but the planning commission's gotta be comfortable that it can function as it is and Katie's the one that brought up the question, that's what puts us kind of-
Right, when I was reviewing this, um, I, I was understood that this was proposed drainage, because for some reason it wasn't mapped in our network. So I thought you guys were proposing this box culvert and it just kind of went off the page and I didn't know what. Now that it's existing, it makes a lot more sense.
Even if it's, if it's proposed or existing, it's, I mean, it's still there and it, and it works, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly why we're-
Okay, you guys have to decide what you want to do with it.
I, I, I mean, I, I go back to Mr. Culver's question, do they want us to?
They're asking you for to vote on it the way it's presented. Yes.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to Mr. Culver. Second by Mr. Peters.
Austin.
No.
Cloud.
No.
Compton.
No.
Culvert.
Yes.
David.
No.
Mueller. Par- Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Passes five-four.
Okay, passes five-four, I would suggest you guys get together really quick, figure this stuff out, okay?
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Next we have R twenty-two dash twenty-three, Roland E. and Judith K. Davis. Did I miss one?
No, we're at, we're at Signature Bank.
Signature Bank.
Let's try that one, man. R twenty-two dash twenty-two, Signature Bank of Arkansas. Approximately three point four acres on the west side of the intersection of South Old Missouri Road and Electric Avenue. Resoned from C two to M F sixteen, presented by E S I.
I guess Blake Murray again with E S I, uh, try to, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that y'all have. Subject property, right there at Electric and two sixty-five, I think it's an excellent place for multifamily. Happy to try to answer any questions y'all have.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial and regional commercial use for this area. However, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be based accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility and environmental factors. Multifamily housing should be developed at a density scale that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and available utilities and roadway capacity.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote?
I just have a quick, so, we feel like this is in keeping with everything in the surrounding area.
There's a lot of multifamily that provides that buffer between the residence, I mean, the commercial that's along Old Missouri Road. I think we're seeing a change in development in some of those areas.
Is outlook that correctly, correctly, right, that's single-family on the west direction?
On the west, uh-huh. M F sixteen allows for sixteen units maximum, they have to start with twelve to get to sixteen, they have to meet multifamily design standards, which include screening and, you know, we, we will not want units on the backside that's gonna look down into those those lots in the back, I don't know if y'all proposing, I mean, you know, it allows for something taller, but I think that's what we would encourage you to create that, that kind of a setting there.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we did receive a email in from a citizen late this afternoon on this, that everyone should have received a copy of, just wanted to make sure that that was entered into the record. I mean, we read it if we need to or just agree that it's entered into the record, but just to make sure we brought it up.
We all have copies.
This will be from Randy Combs.
In the record?
Let me just read it because it got handed in so late this afternoon, it says, "My name is Randy Combs and my wife Stacy and I are one hundred percent against changing the zone from C two to M F sixteen. It will be directly in my backyard and will ruin the value of my home as well, please take into consideration that we have lived here coming on twenty years and cherish our home and friends in this neighborhood. Also, several of the homes here did not receive notification of the meeting, these homes are affected as well. How can something pass without proper notification? Please feel free to email or call me about this, thank you." Let me, let me just point out that the ordinance requires only adjacent property owners be notified and the proper notifications were there.
Be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Mr. Davis?
Cloud. Compton.
Yes.
Culvert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller. Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yeah.
Passes nine-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go to R twenty-two dash twenty-three. Roland E. and Judith K. Davis. Two thousand twenty-two North Forty-eighth Street, A one to M F twenty-four, presented by E S I.
Blake Murray with E S I again, uh, these next three items are kind of right next to each other and the same thing is requested for all three there. Zoned A one requesting M F twenty-four, it's right next to the interstate, uh, not, not far from the Elm Springs exit, so it's, in my opinion, a good spot for a multifamily density, and that's what we're requesting and I'm happy to try to answer any questions y'all have.
Staff comments?
And I'm gonna have the same comment for all three, so we're only gonna do my comments once, okay? Uh, the adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates, indicates low density use. Uh, however, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility and environmental factors. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale. And larger multifamily developments should be located on sites with adequate space for off-street parking, accessory structures and recreational activity. And to where the edge of single-family residential areas where higher traffic generation and taller building heights can be better accommodated. And if you'll remember the property, there's a lot of property to the north of this zone, this of two, and being developed as single-family.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a call for the vote, I guess R twenty-two dash twenty-three first, be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. Culver.
Compton.
Yes.
Culvert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller. Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Recuse.
Oh, okay. Okay, Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, we'll go to R twenty-two dash twenty-four.
Same comments.
Same comments, call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for Mr. Culver.
Culvert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller. Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Recuse.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Passes eight-zero. We'll go to R twenty-two dash twenty-five, same staff comments.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. Culver.
David.
Yes.
Mueller. Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Recuse.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Culvert.
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to B, R twenty-two dash twenty-five, B J M, uh, we just did that one. All right, let's try public conditional uses. C twenty-two oh five, Jeff and Cheryl Potter, east side of Urban Magar World, tam the lot split in the planning area, presented by Dan Jenkins.
If you're actually waiting for Dan Jenkins, he is unavailable, he's down sick, this is actually Jeff Potter, and I'm a layman, so be gentle.
And you're-
Questions being, I'm Jeff Potter, yes ma'am.
My name is Kelly Van Kuren. And I have property on both sides of the property that's in question.
Okay, are you here to represent that or to make a comment?
I'm here because I'm concerned about the separation.
Okay, before we get to that, okay, just a minute, let, we're not quite there yet, we gotta make sure we're, we, we need to talk about this a little bit. This property is in the, in the county, in our planning area. So we are making recommendations to the county for the split of property. They do show a thirty-two excess utility easement for the plat. Rick, do you have any other comments on this one? Okay, and is it proposed that that excess easement will be paved? Because our requirements would be pavement of that excess easement up to the second track. You propose to pave it?
Well, I suppose if that's what we need to do, then that's what we will do, yes.
And you have septic system approval for each of those lots? They, they seem to be large enough, because one's three point seven five and the other one's five, so you should be able to get septic systems on those, have you had them perked?
Uh, they were previously perked before, but they are, they may be out of time now, they're probably more than six months out.
You will have to have current perk test to submit to go with this, so, before we can move this forward, but that's something you can submit to the office, okay?
So, um, we can't split it until then?
We can't, we won't sign all the documents till then, you have time to get those in though. We have comments for, see what our adjacent property owner comments are.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
My name is Kelly Van Kuren and I own property around, and I'm also my brother James Van Kuren's legal representative. And we are in the process of filing a lawsuit against the sale of this property. Um, and we were asked to come here tonight to ask you to table this decision for at least thirty to sixty days for the attorney to get all the paperwork filed with the court.
You're- We're, uh, I, I, I'm a little confused.
You got that one all by yourself, you get this one.
Does, does the next item on the agenda pertain to this as well?
I'm sorry.
The next item on the agenda, is it pertaining to this as well, are you having the same plans for that?
Yeah.
So, all that they're asking is just to create a tandem lot, right?
That's what our request is, to create a tandem lot, that's it.
And that both requested the same, and they're complying with the requirements of the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I don't know if you want to elaborate on what your plans are.
What we're doing is we're filing a lawsuit, um, because the property was supposedly, allegedly sold illegally. Um, and again, I can't give out all the details that's going to the court and it's gonna be going in front of a grand jury and all that. So I was just asked to come tonight, give you my name, let you know I'm in the process of filing a lawsuit and that, um, to ask you to table it for thirty to sixty days.
This is the first I've heard of any of this.
Never had this situation, so I don't know what, it is very awkward.
I don't think that granting a tandem lot split, in my opinion, if it's an ownership question, is gonna have a bearing one way or the other, uh, on that, so.
Well, because I'm not gonna let it be a housing development, I want it to stay country land.
Well, they're proposing to create a three point seven five acre tract and a five acre tract on this one split. So that's not exactly a subdivision, because that meets the county's minimum lot sizes and it meets our minimum lot size to stay agricultural.
I can, I can tell you that there are covenants on that, building covenants on that land restricting any, uh, restricting the number of houses that can be built, there can only be two houses on that nine acre lot, on that eight point seven five acres.
Mr. Potter, we can just barely hear you, is there any way for you to get closer or?
Uh, I sure, I sure can, I'm sorry, can you hear me any better?
Not really.
Wow, okay, um, I can try to find a microphone, but, um, I'll speak loudly so you can hear me, is this any better?
It's better, okay.
Okay, I'll try to speak loudly, I apologize. There are building covenants on that land restricting how many houses can be built, there can only be two, that lot can only be split once and there can only be one house on each lot. And so there's not, it's not going to be a subdivision, it cannot be. I'm not a, I'm not a subcontractor or anything, I'm, I'm a property owner that wants to build a house.
Okay. This is up to the planning commission, from a staff standpoint, I don't see there's anything to keep this from being approved as a conditional use for a tandem lot split. If you approve it, recommend it to be approved, it goes to the county, they make the decision, because it's in the county planning area, it's in our planning area, but it's county's jurisdiction, not ours.
And for this to come before us, under whatever controls or purview that you have, there's no ownership, like, this is being represented by the owner of the property?
Right.
As per the record, right?
Right. We wouldn't let it get on the agenda if we didn't have that.
Right, that's why.
So this can be a call for the question on the, the tandem lot split, the conditional use for the tandem lot split.
And, and just to be clear, you need a perk test from me on both lots?
Right, you'll need to-
Before the-
For them to approve it, they'll need to see the perk test.
Understood, I'll make that happen.
Call for the question? Call for the question, Mr. Culver? Mr. Culver?
Mueller.
That means we're approving the conditional use for a tandem lot split, that's all we're doing. And actually, we're recommending to, to the council, I mean, to the county, that it meets our standards in the, in the planning area.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Culvert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Okay, so this will move forward to the county with the planning commission's recommendation to approve the conditional use, okay? The next one, uh, Mr. Jenkins, are you here for that one? Okay, so we don't have anybody here to represent this one? Okay, this one will have to be tabled because there's nobody here to represent it, so, okay?
We'll move on to preliminary plats, replats and final plats. We've already done Jacob's Crossing, we will go to the railroad edition, R P twenty-two oh three, three oh two West Allen, Lot one A, block seventeen, represented by Satterfield Land Surveyors.
He's doing that one. Okay, you're going.
My name is Ricky Hill, I'm with Satterfield Land Surveyors and I'm here to answer any questions you might have about this track combination.
It's a track combination, but because it's in a plat of subdivision, it has to be replat, so all of those lots are being consolidated into one lot.
Yes ma'am.
It's basically what it-
Yes ma'am.
What it comes down to, yeah, okay.
Staff comments?
That's staff comments, I think everything else has been addressed, the streets are all there, it's just a combination, but it has to be a replat.
Other than standard comments, we'll need a resolution stating that blank has authority to execute the certificate of transmittal ownership and ordinance.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion? Motion to-
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments?
Motion to Mr. Culver, second. Second by Mr. Davis.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Culvert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion passes nine-zero.
You want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by Thursday at noon. Actually, tomorrow afternoon by five, because we gotta have it to the, to the mayor's office by Thursday at noon, so we need it tomorrow, okay?
Next is R P twenty-two oh four, Sagely Village. Lot sixty-one, Parker's Place subdivision, presented by E S I. Also have a large scale twenty-two dash sixteen.
Daniel Butler with E S I, happy to answer any questions you guys have for me.
Daniel Butler with ESI, happy to answer any questions you guys have for me.
Staff comments?
Other than standard comments, all we have is that they will need a resolution stating that blank has authority to execute the certificate of transmittal ownership and ordinance.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission? Motion for the replat?
Subject to staff comments?
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mrs. Mueller?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
You wanna go to council next Tuesday, we need it in our office by five o'clock tomorrow, the ordinance.
Large scale, twenty-two dash sixteen?
Yep, we can use large scale, go ahead.
Yeah, Daniel Butler again with ESI, and I don't have anything to add, so if you guys have any questions for me?
Staff comments?
Rick, we need the staff comments for the large scale for Sagely Village.
Uh, they're only standard comments at this time.
Any comments from the audience?
We gotta get engineering comments first.
Just a couple engineering comments. Submit drafts of the easements, um, oh no, I got that. Submit a signed and sealed drainage report, add curb and gutter at the, the dead ends of streets and update your driveway detail, I think there's an old one that's being used, and then apply for the grading permit.
Comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion per staff comment, per staff.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Culver?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Passes nine zero. Uh, large scale developments. L twenty-two oh eight, ATEC building expansion, twenty-nine oh one Chapman with B twenty-two oh seven, B twenty-two oh eight, W twenty-two oh two, which is variance for reduction of front setbacks from fifty to thirty feet, variance for driveway requirements. Twenty-two oh eight, twenty-two oh eight is variance for commercial design standards. A, structure backsides, B, pedestrian flow, C, central features and community service, D, facades and exterior walls, E, detail features, F, entryways, G, functional landscaping, H, lighting, and a waiver of street improvements, that's twenty-two oh two. Presented by Mr. David Gilbert.
Let me start off by pointing out that this, uh, proposed plan does have a detention pond to limit development flows to their pre-development peaks, so that's all taken care of. We've got that put in the back before it discharges onto the adjacent farm, so hopefully there won't be any concerns there. Uh, the proposal is to, uh, basically double the size of the existing building to add some office space and a little bit of storage space for their, uh, business and, uh, service operations. This business has been locating in this, uh, same location with some minor changes, uh, for it. I know I've been buying parts there for thirty years, so it's been at least that long and maybe even longer. We have added, uh, paved parking in the rear to get things kind of out of the way and there's really not much room in the front to do that with. Uh, there is an existing parking lot in the front which we would like to keep and that existing parking in the front causes a number of issues. For example, uh, we can't really make that entrance to that parking area be forty feet wide because then people couldn't get into the parking spaces. So we'd like to leave that at its, uh, we're, we're planning to narrow it down a little bit, get it to about sixty feet, uh, but that's as far as we can go. The existing parking is a driveway onto Chapman. Uh, in addition to that, there's an existing gravel driveway on the other corner of Chapman and the adjacent property to the east has a driveway right there. So we can't get separation between the two. We can't really combine them because then we couldn't get trucks into the back. The building would be in the way. So there's a very, uh, real limit as to what we can do and still function on this piece of property. Uh, as far as pedestrian flow, central features and community spaces and that sort of thing, uh, if you go seven hundred feet to the west or fourteen hundred feet to the east is the first place you find a public sidewalk. There's not any sidewalk there. Again, over the last thirty years, the only real development that I know of that's taken place on that whole block is that a warehouse was renovated to be an automobile repair shop and they tore down a house. Uh, the property across the street is all part of, belongs to the George family and is part of their residential estate that they have carved out there. So it's very unlikely that anything's ever gonna happen there. And to develop features for pedestrians really doesn't seem like it serves any purpose because there's not any pedestrian traffic there. We did add a bicycle rack and a bench, uh, thinking that, well, somebody might ride their bike there and at least that would be something we could put out. Uh, I don't know that a bicycle rack technically meet, is on your list of requirements. It is on the, the list for other cities, so we did make an effort to try to do that. As far as foundation landscaping, what we're asking is a, to not be required to place foundation landscaping on the existing building. There's pavement all up around all sides of the existing building except for the east side, which is where the building expansion's gonna go. If we cut into that pavement, then we're inviting drainage issues because the drainage in that area, you know, things are, they're working, but they're not, there's not a lot of leeway there to make it work. What we did do was we added landscaping along the frontage that was not technically required that kind of takes the place of that, uh, of what we're asking for. The existing building does meet a thirty foot setback requirement. It does not meet the fifty foot setback requirement that currently exists for buildings with parking in the front. Again, this was done decades ago before that was a requirement to my knowledge. Uh, and it's kind of hard to extend a building if you can't add on to the building where it sits. So no, no new parking is proposed in front of the expansion and it would meet the thirty foot requirement without parking in that case. We think we've met all the requirements, we've got detention, we've got loading spaces, we've got the parking count. There, there are a few, again, the, the majority of these variances are aimed at either trying to keep the existing driveways in a place where they can be useful and keeping the parking in the front, uh, and then not connecting the sidewalk. We did ask for a waiver from street improvements for this part, for this property. It's about twenty-seven hun, the block is about twenty-seven hundred feet long. This is a hundred and eighty-eight feet of frontage. To widen half a street for a hundred and eighty-eight feet doesn't really seem like it serves the public interest and so we'd like to be considered not to have to do that. With that, uh, oh, lighting, let me speak to lighting. There are houses nearby, uh, there's a house immediately to the west of this. The business is only open from nine AM to five PM, which even during daylight savings time is daylight hours. Uh, there's, there's not, the, the only lights out there now, there's a yard light on one of the remote buildings and then there's a lot, one light on the building, the east side building wall. The owner does not wish to add any additional lighting. We don't want to add any additional, you know, disturbance to the neighborhood, any light pollution and really since they're only open till five o'clock, uh, we don't feel that any lighting is necessary for that. With that, we'll take your questions.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, uh, when Washington County provides a new parcel number, please adjust cover page and other pages accordingly and applicant acknowledges and will do so. This is as a result of an informal plaque combining two parcels that is related to this project. Uh, except for permitted entrance and or exit drive, every off-street parking area shall be set back from the street right-of-way line a minimum of five feet for which a variance has been requested. A lighting plan is required displaying at least one foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. A variance has been requested. Uh, continuous internal pedestrian park, or I'm sorry, walkways no less than five feet in width from the public sidewalk to the principal customer entrance of all principal buildings on site are required. A variance has been requested. Internal pedestrian walkways shall connect focal points of pedestrian activity and feature landscaped areas no, along no less than fifty percent of their length. A variance has been requested. Internal pedestrian walkways must be distinguishable from driving surfaces through the use of low maintenance surface materials such as pavers, bricks or scored concrete. A variance has been requested. Central features and community spaces shall have direct access to the public sidewalk. A variance has been requested. And each principal building on a site shall have clearly defined, highly visible customer entrances featuring any three of the following canopies or porticoes, overhangs, recesses, projections, uh, arcades, raised cornice, parapets over the door, peaked roofs, forms, arches, outdoor patios, display windows, integrated tilework and or moldings, integral planners or wing walls that incorporate landscaped areas and or places for sitting. And a variance has been requested.
Engineering comments? Um, add note about stockpiling to the site plan. Uh, show street improvements according to master street plan, which a waiver has been requested. Um, if the waiver is granted, we still would like to see the, um, full thirty foot of right-of-way dedicated according to the master street plan. The driveway radius minimum is twenty-eight foot and the maximum width is forty feet and a variance has been requested for this. And the new driveway, this doesn't apply to the existing, but the new driveway should be concrete to the right-of-way, um, as shown in the standard details and then applied for the grading permit.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
I guess we're gonna, how are we gonna do the variances? How would you suggest it?
I, I just have, I just have a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is pretty close to where I live, actually, and I would tell you the majority, if not all of the variances, I don't have any issue with, with granting. The reason is this sits in the middle of a pretty stretch of, pretty desolate little stretch of road. Nobody's gonna walk up to this, always need, you know, there's no sidewalk usage out here and I understand our position on sidewalks, but I don't believe anybody's gonna walk up on sidewalks there. As far as the, the, uh, the setbacks, the majority of what they're doing is behind by putting the parking back there and realigning their drive path, which is the right thing to do for that building. I'd love to see this building get a facelift, I think that'd be great for the community as well. Um, but as far as, as far as my vote goes, I don't have an issue taking the variances altogether.
I have a comment about the lighting. Uh, do you think the owner would be opposed to doing building mounted lighting for the parking area? Uh, that's obviously full cutoff?
Um, that can be considered, but again, the store is closed at five PM.
What if a cop pulls somebody over, they need to get off the road to be pulled over? I'm sure they would be much lighter to pull into a parking lot that's got some lighting there than none at all.
Well, crime prevention through environmental design, which we have adopted in our commercial design standards, it's not just for the hours they're open, but to prevent vandalism and create dark areas after you're closed. Again, so the police department can see what's going on in there if there's any vandalism or anything like that going on, so.
That, that is true, but...
The other thing about the lighting too is that, you know, we, this is being reviewed because it's being expanded, right? And we have one opportunity that's not to say that ATEC is always going to be there. So I, like, a lot of this is specific to ATEC and their needs and I get all that, but lighting, I mean, if they're not there, I mean, I still feel like that's kind of a, a, a good base level thing to have, regardless of who, who's there.
You okay with that? And Mr. Vaston, uh, is the owner of ATEC and he has indicated he's, he's open to that, to building mounted lighting.
Okay, so you'll submit a lighting plan that meets the lighting standard then?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so that variance request comes off.
Question about the street improvements? So, uh, is this a case where we can do payment in lieu of or anything like that? So we have, if we need to look at this later?
That recommendation can be made at the council. The final decision about street improvements is, is made by the city council. But you can recommend it whichever way you want to go. Uh, I do no, note that the city engineers department asked for dedication of right-of-way to meet the master street plan standards, is that shown on your plaque?
The right-of-way already exists, it is thirty feet on this side of the property. It's there, it's, it's on the survey.
What's the master street plan standard for Chapman, do you know?
It's thirty.
Okay, so that comment can go away? Okay. So it would be a recommendation to council if you want to recommend payment in lieu of, in lieu of, and they make that, they make that consideration, so. So if we take lighting off of that, do we want to do all the rest of them together or separate any certain ones out?
Do them together.
Just do the waiver separate.
Sure. Take the lighting off, do them all together.
Including the waiver?
Yes.
Are we gonna recommend payment in lieu of for the waiver or just a complete waiver?
This would be a call for the vote.
Okay, so you're gonna call for the vote for all the variances to be taken together, removing the lighting variance and a recommendation for waiver of street improvements with payment in lieu of, to city council? That's what's gonna be voted on all at one time?
Yep.
Okay?
Anybody call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for it, Mr. David? Okay. It's, it's hard to tell which direction that voice is coming.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Staff will prepare the resolution to go to council on the twenty-six on the waiver of street improvements with a recommendation for payment in lieu of improvements. If you want to go ahead and make payment in lieu of improvements, I don't think it has to go to council then. If you're willing to do that and dedicate the right-of-way, or the right-of-way issue in a way, never mind.
We have a motion for large scale?
Motion to approve subject to staff comments?
Motion, Mr. Culver?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters?
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes. Passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Next we have L twenty-two dash fifteen, South Coast baking expansion, eight hundred South Fortieth Street, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush, ESI. South Coast baking, uh, on Fortieth Street. This is a ninety thousand square foot industrial expansion for them, um, immediately to the south and, uh, happy to answer any other questions.
Staff comments?
Real quick one, this was previously approved in twenty fifteen. It's the very same project that was approved then. It got one extension and then they decided not to start and that's why it's back again. I don't know, do we have anything besides standard comments?
Uh, the only other thing is just, uh, working on the lighting plan. There are a couple spots that need to be touched up and, and we've spoken about that already.
Katie, do you have anything different?
There was just one item, um, there's a sidewalk that's shown to connect to the neighboring property and it sounded like the neighbor was in on it, but we were just looking for an agreement that they could build that improvement on the neighboring property.
There'll have to be an easement for it, we're to be on there.
Yeah, a little access easement there.
Yep, okay.
Any comments from the audience?
And they're gonna build this time? As far as we know, right? As far as we know, they're gonna build this time, okay.
Comments from the audience? To the commission, be a motion per staff comments?
That, the sidewalk that goes to the adjacent property, that's not over an old wooden bridge, is it? Is that a culvert there or is that? Okay, 'cause the home show put a, a wood bridge in there about thirty years ago and said they'd take it out immediately after the home show and it never got taken out.
Yeah, it's, it's planned to be replaced in this project.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, you've been around a long time.
That's worn on me a long time.
Been waiting to say that all this time, right?
Your motion?
That's pretty good. That's Mr. Mueller? Second, Mr. Culver?
Whoever Debbie puts down anyway. She's gonna fix it.
Compton?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Passes nine zero. Passes nine zero. L twenty-two dash eighteen, after-school program gym expansion, eight sixty-six South Fortieth Street, with variances of B twenty-two thirty-two, variance for reduction of required parking, and B twenty-two dash thirty-three, variance of commercial design standards, which is a foundational landscaping presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush, ESI. This is a new gymnasium facility in the existing parking lot in front of the existing building, eleven thousand square feet. The reasoning for the variances is this, the parking isn't needed for this operation, and it doesn't, the code doesn't really have a good fit for this use. However, we got as many parking spaces as we could on the existing site, and then we're asking for a nine space reduction. And foundational landscaping is on the north side of the building, basically just because it's a long skinny building and we needed access on both sides for fire around the building.
Are you putting additional landscaping in other locations?
We are putting equivalent amount of landscaping in that front parking area. We loaded that up with bushes and stuff.
Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments, variance has been requested to decrease the number of required parking spaces, and a variance has been requested for foundation landscaping.
Katie? Nope, no comments?
Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
Real quick, what happens to the spaces that we're not using and... Gosh, I forgot the second one.
What do you mean, they're, they just don't have room to put that many more spaces on there?
So, it's just gonna be parking lots?
And it is kind of a unique situation because a lot of these kids for after-school program are bussed in. Parents come and pick up their kids, so it's the drive-through pickup, don't necessarily park to get out and go in. And after-school program in the summer, they bust a lot of those kids in then, too? Or do they? I don't remember. I talked to too many projects, I don't remember which is which.
I'm Jason Coats, the owner of the after-school program. Parents drop off during the summer. So, it's with the, we wanted to have plenty of where there's never a chance for overflow on the forty-eighth. So, their parents will drop off, they're not normally bussed. And then during the school year, we operate the schools, so there won't be actually children in the building during the school year.
Oh, okay.
Only during all day when public school is out.
And...
A lot of stacking room on site, so that there won't be back down on forty-eighth Street.
And on the foundational landscaping, do we confirm that was offset?
Yes.
Okay.
Where is the loading in this diagram? Or where do, where do they get dropped off? The front of the building there where the parking space is, or?
Between the two buildings.
It's a covered drop-off, right? Between the two buildings, so they pull through there.
So, you circle around the building, drop off, and circle back out?
Yes.
All right, very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Take the variances together? Be a call for the vote? Call for the vote? Mr. Austin? Mr. Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Passes nine zero, variances. Now, the large scale, the motion, subject to staff comments? Ms. Mueller?
Second by Mr. David.
Second by Mr. David.
Thank you. I heard that. Katie?
That's pretty good.
I like that. All right, David?
Yes.
Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We have pictures of that building. I believe. They're, we're gonna pack it.
Oh, did we have pictures? Nobody asked about that. But there are elevations in the package, and there was no, there was no variances required. Thank you for designing it like, like we asked for. Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we got L twenty-two nineteen. Elliott Electric Supply Expansion, five thirty-seven North Fortieth Street, presented by ESI.
Thank you. We are back on Fortieth Street now. This is a forty thousand square foot facility expansion on the north side of Elliott Electric. And other onsite improvements, no variances on this one. Happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Staff has only standard comments.
I just need to see the detention pond outlet structure detail.
Any comments from the audience?
We do have elevations on this one, they didn't ask for any variances on this one either.
That's right. To the commission, be a motion for staff comments?
This is gonna go where the headless deer is?
Yeah.
Is that right? There's a deer out there right now, right?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. We'll make sure it's in the right spot.
Are you moving it someplace else on the side, or is it really gonna go away?
Ben knows where all the cool places in Springfield are. The wooden bridges, the headless deer.
It's a monument.
Do we have a motion? Motion, subject to staff comments? Motion, Mr. Peters?
Shannon the second.
Ms. Mueller the second.
Okay. That's okay. All right. Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you.
We're down to L twenty-two dash twenty-two Discount Tire.
Now we've got twenty-two twenty.
Did I miss one? Okay. Wrote this one down on the wrong one. Okay, Martin's, sorry, L twenty-two dash twenty, Martin's Plastering and Stucco. Previously, L twenty-one dash forty. Five hundred West Canaline Road, we've got variance of B twenty-two dash thirty-four, variance of commercial design standards. A entrances, B pedestrian flow, C central features and community spaces, D foundational landscaping. Waiver twenty-two oh seven, waiver of street improvements on West Canaline Road, presented by Morrison Shipley, half engineers. Representative?
Nobody here?
This is Larry Grellie with Morrison Shipley Half.
Okay.
Here, answer any questions you may have.
You're a little bit hard to understand, so you're gonna have to speak up a little bit.
Okay. Yes, Larry Grellie with Morrison Shipley Half. Is that any better?
Little bit.
Little bit? I don't know where, where I might be causing the trouble, the problem, but... Yeah, if you have any questions, I mean, they're looking at, they reduced the size of the building since we were here last, is now three thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot. But we're still asking for the same variances and the same waiver.
Staff comments?
In addition, in addition to standard comments, they need to show details of handicap ramps, and these are contingent upon approval or denial of the sidewalk variance. Truncated domes are required for ADA standards. This is, again, contingent upon approval or denial of sidewalk variance. Lighting plan is required, displaying at least one foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. Photometric plan appears to be missing from the plan set at this time. All sides of a principal building that directly face an abutting public right-of-way shall feature at least one customer entrance unless the principal building directly faces more than two abutting rights-of-way, then only two entrances are required, one along the primary street and one along the secondary street. A variance has been requested. A sidewalk is required along all sides of the lot abutting public right-of-way per master street plan. A variance has been requested. Foundation landscaping is required, variance has been requested. Central features and community spaces shall have direct access to the public sidewalk. A variance has been requested.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
I just have a, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Larry, is this, what is the exterior of this building made up of?
I'll have to let Jimmy Epley answer that question. He's on the, on the line as well.
Yeah, I'm right here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so the base we're using is a stack stone brick or stone? The owner has not decided yet, but I figure either one would need to be seen by this group. And the, the what's above that is a, an ephesus material, painted ephesus.
So, it's not metal?
It is not metal, no.
Great, thank you.
That has changed since the previous one that was on. And the length of the building has been shortened? What's the flink on the long side?
Seventy-five feet.
Okay, so it's not a hundred foot anymore, it doesn't have to have those brakes or anything like that anymore? And the foundation landscaping, you have additional landscaping in other areas to meet the requirements for the foundation landscaping, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you don't have a central feature, you don't have any picnic tables, bike racks, anything like that?
No, we do have a bench and a bike rack. It's right there in that landscape area in front of the building, between the building and the right-of-way.
Okay, and then the entrance faces to the west rather than toward the street?
That is correct.
Okay, that one stays. And you're asking for a waiver of the street improvements? Did you dedicate the additional right-of-way needed to meet master street plan standards?
Yes.
Okay, so there again, it's just the street improvements, no sidewalks, no curb gutter, no drainage, anything's what they're asking for?
I guess we wanna start, do the same thing with the street improvements, with the payment in lieu of the recommendation. You wanna take all the variances and the waiver together?
With the recommendation for payment in lieu of to council?
Yes. Be a call for the vote? Call for the vote? Mr. David?
That was actually Mr. Covert.
Roy did.
Okay, Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Yes.
Passes nine zero. Next, we got L twenty-two dash twenty-two. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess we're going large scale. I'm getting old, you know? All right, we'll do the large scale, we need a... Motion, subject to staff comments? Motion, Mr. Peters? Second, Ms. Mueller?
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Now we can, you can do discount.
Okay, we're going to L twenty-two dash twenty-two Discount Tire, west of sixty-three seventy-two West Sunset Avenue. We've got a variance, B twenty-two dash thirty-five, commercial design standards, a foundation, foundational landscaping presented by Vasquez Engineering LLC.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Juan Vasquez, representing Discount Tire Company. Discount Tire is planning to construct their current approximate seven hundred, seven seven hundred square foot retail tire. Yes?
Mr. Vasquez, we're having trouble here. We can hear, but it's really warm.
We can't understand what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better? No?
You just managed to speak a little slower, okay?
A little slower, okay, can you hear me now?
Better.
Is it better?
Yes.
Okay, let me see if I can turn down my volume. How's that, is that any better?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Juan Vasquez with Vasquez Engineering. I'm representing Discount Tire Company. They're looking at constructing their prototype store here on two point nine seven acres within the Harbor Metals P U D. Discount Tire is the largest independent national tire retailer in the country. They have several stores in the state of Arkansas with several stores in northwest Arkansas. We are requesting one variance for the foundation plantings, just along two sides, the side where our garage bays door, of course, and then the north side where we have our loading area. The other two sides will have the required foundation planting, and the missing foundation planting is made up within the rest of the project development. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Staff comments?
On the cover page, please display legal description of the property with parcel number directly above. Among the general landscaping notes, please include landscaping must be guaranteed for two years. Foundation landscaping is required, and a variance has been requested. Otherwise, it is all standard comments.
Any comments from the audience?
I have one question. Do you have your approval from the architectural review committee at Harbor Metals?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I guess to the commission? The variances, call for the vote? Call for Ms. Mueller?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero. Now, let's go to the large scale. Motion, first. Subject to staff comments? Motion, subject to staff comments? Motion, Mr. Peters? Second by Ms. Mueller?
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller? Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Large scale passes nine zero. Okay, we're down to board of adjustments. First one is B twenty-two oh two, Jesus Alcon, Alcantara. Nine oh six North Virginia Street, variance for minimum si- lot size from, in an MF twelve zoning for a duplex from ten thousand five hundred to ninety-seven hundred square feet, presented by Roosevelt Alfarro.
Good evening, I'm Roosevelt Alfarro. Um, yes, we're wanting to, uh, present this, see if, uh, there'll be any objections to putting up a duplex there. Uh, I know there had been questions regarding, uh, on the northwest corner of the property, uh, that storm drain, that's right there. But instead of building a side-to-side, uh, duplex, we're wanting to propose to build a, a two-story duplex. That way we could, uh, keep away from that storm drain on that corner.
Staff comments?
Do we have any comments on this? Building inspection, have any, or fire department have any issues? Katie?
So, there's the storm drain on the north side. Um, it didn't look like it got picked up, the exact dimensions of it in the survey. So, um, all we would ask is that, um, any structures need to be built at least five feet away from the edge of the pipe. So, we'll need to determine where, where the edge of that pipe is, and then any structures will have to be five foot from that. You can do parking and driveways on top of that storm drain, just no structures.
And that's something that building inspection will note on their site plan when you check their foundation? How do we check it otherwise?
Yeah, we really need an easement to show where that line is that we can work from. Because it doesn't show on the plat. So, so, I mean, we could, we could say you can't put it on top, and we can say that you can't be within, they want five feet, depending upon the depth, the foundation can't be more than one foot down from one foot over from that, from that pipe. But, but as far as that, we really do need an easement, unless there's something that it can say that it has to be that, that dimension. I mean, I, I agree that we need to be five feet away from the pipe. There's no doubt about that.
They gotta be twenty foot off the, the back property line, right?
Is that, is that a public, is it a public drainage pipe, or is it, so they're just, they never, they never got it in the easement, or they never put the easement?
Which shows a ten-foot utility easement on here. Is that?
It's not in the easement.
Okay.
I mean, that's the only question. I mean, we would just need to have something, some document to show that.
Okay, was this a survey that was submitted that shows that graded inlet without, not in the exact location?
No, I think that is the location of the inlet. There's a pipe that connects that graded inlet and the manhole at the street. Um, and that was not shown. So, we don't know the exact dimensions, the exact depth of that pipe, and its exact, um, location from the property line, or is it's within that easement or not?
Okay, so that utility easement on the, whatever side of the lot that is, has to be addressed before they can get a permit to build on? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, we would need them to identify where that pipe is from the property line, and then, then if we want five more feet, then that would have to be addressed, so we know where it's at. So, we can measure, because we're going to measure from the property line. We're not going to measure from the drainage, like, because it's underground.
So, you understand the site plan will have to be submitted with your building permit for a duplex before you can start work on that?
Yes.
Okay. That is a condition, then we need to make sure that this, this variance request has, so that we know how it's
The, the other issue we have is it, it shows a seven-foot side setback per protected, per covenants. That's not per ordinance. So, we'd want eight feet there.
Okay. Is that be, per protective covenants or where the subdivision was planted?
The subdivision is not planted with setbacks. It's that old. So, we go to ordinance.
Okay, so it needs an eight-foot side setback?
And it needs a twenty-foot rear setback and, um, and instead of just the ten-foot easement for utility easement.
Okay, so are, are you ready to move forward with this, or are you going to ask for variances for those setbacks? Okay, but you didn't ask, you didn't ask for a variance on the setback. You only asked for a variance on the lot size. You can't hear a variance that wasn't otherwise published. Do you want to table this one, go back and correct your drawings, and come back with everything on there, and we do it all at one time?
Um, well, I was trying to see if we, if that's possible, to stick to the ten-foot setback in the back, uh, so we could fit that in more nicely.
Okay, what I'm hearing is there is a concern whether where the existing drainage pipe fits in that area, and you've got to be five foot off of that, and unless we know where that is, I don't know that we can tell you that tonight.
Yes. No, but I'm referring to the, to the rear. Where it says a ten-feet utility easement?
Well, but
Which, where, where the shed is at, where, if you look at the other
But the rear, and that's a rear?
Yes, that would be the rear, correct.
But the rear setback is twenty feet, and you didn't ask for a variance on the rear setback. You only asked for a area with a lot, area to be less than the standard. We can't hear a variance request that hasn't been published. So, you're going to have to come back and ask for another variance next month anyway. Do you want to table this, clear it all up, get the pipe on there, then we know everything's covered when, when we take action on that, and you know you can move forward? And then you want to leave that side, other side back at seven and a half, whatever the covenants say?
Yes.
You need to ask all of those at the same time.
Patsy, he, he may want an answer on whether or not he can do a duplex, because the rest of that may not matter if we don't give him the variance on the area.
Well, it's, it's zoned to allow a duplex to go in there. Okay, you're saying if we
If he doesn't have the square footage, and we don't give him the variance, then the rest of it may become moot.
If you're not going to reduce it from ten-five to nine-seven, it can't, the rest of it isn't moot, you're right. So, we need to hear that variance first, and if that's approved, you're still going to have to come back with another one.
Okay.
Okay.
I understand. Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? To the commission, call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Parker.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Okay, so you can work within that ninety-seven hundred square feet, but you got to come back with your variance request and get the pipe on there, so we know that we can deal with that one, okay?
I've got B twenty-two thirty-one. B twenty-two thirty-one. Ray and Lisa Dotson. Three four nine five Raymond Lane. Variance for reduction of rear setback from thirty-five feet to ten feet, presented by Ray Dotson.
Thank you all. Uh, my name's Ray Dotson. I live at thirty-nine hundred Schwartz Lane. Uh, the property in question here is thirty-four ninety-five. I lived there about four years ago. Just to give you a little history on the property. We bought the property in nineteen seventy-two, my father did, and it was just bare land, uh, A-one land with no fences, no nothing, and we come in and we built the fences two hundred and fifty foot wide and four hundred and fifty foot deep nor- four hundred and fifty to the north. And about seventy-five, my dad, uh, built a house there, and this is at the thirty-four, thirty-four ninety-five. Well, a couple of weeks ago, um, well, maybe longer, a couple of weeks, maybe a month ago, we had the big storm that came through. And it blew down, uh, one of the neighbor's tree over on to, to my garage there at the back of my house. And we had to take the fence down, obviously, to, to get the tree off the building. So, once we got the tree off the building, we started trying to repair the building, and we figured it was too far gone. So, my son-in-law, Mike, over here, we started building, uh, the building, and we set the corners exactly where the corners was in nineteen seventy-two or three, when we built the garage there, uh, for the horses. So, from that, once we got into it, the building was no good, and like I said, we started, we started building the, uh, the, the new structure. And we've added, we added to the to the west about twenty feet to the building. My daughter and my son-in-law lives in the property now. My daughter wanted a way to go from the house into the garage with the baby without having to get out in the weather. So, that's what we did, and, uh, there was, uh, I guess, an issue come up with the neighbor, and, and I want to apologize to Dr. Counts here. Uh, didn't think there'd be a problem. His tree on his property blew over. We just, as a neighbor, we took care of it. So, we cut it up, moved it, but we're here today because, I guess, I didn't get a building permit. And I probably should have known I should have got one, but, you know, you just, when storms come in, you try to rebuild back, and I think we're going to have that. Just had a tornado, and you all are going to be running across the same problem. Probably the same thing I got, people wanting to build back. And with this property, we want to try to build back better. It was an old pole barn. It was a garage. It worked for thirty years, since nineteen seventy-two or seventy-three, when we built it. But now it's got a nice concrete floor. It's got a nice roof. It's a nice metal building. The structure looks, it's going to look perfect when we get it done. My closest neighbor is, is probably, uh, Fidel Bari's property is probably, his house is probably, I don't know, is probably a hundred, two hundred feet from me. Dr. Counts is probably six hundred feet, seven hundred feet to the, to the north of me. And like I said, we started the building right where the old building was, and the only thing we did is we added twenty feet more to it, because we wanted to make it better. So, we're asking you for a variance tonight on the setbacks. Now, the way that to me, my house faces west. The north property is Dr. Counts' property, and that's my side yard, which is ten foot from the property line. And then twenty feet to the east of the property is Fidel Bari's property, which is twenty feet where the building was originally sitting. So, you know, if we did this, repaired it, I guess, you know, no big deal, we'd been grandfathered in, but since we added twenty feet to the building to make it better, then the building's code said we had to get a variance, and that's why I'm here to, tonight, to, to ask you for a variance on, on the property. I, I don't see it hurting anything. We're just trying to improve the property as we go along. And all my property is A-one there. I've got another house there that's A-one on the property, and I got approximately two acres there that's A-one property. I'm just asking you for your consideration of giving me the variance where I can build my structure.
Staff comments?
Because it is zone A-one, it has that thirty-five foot setback. If it wasn't zone A-one, it would be twenty.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's another thing, and I talked to the city attorney about this. You're, you're, basically, you're penalizing me for owning a house on A-one property. The city annexed us in in nineteen eighty-five. We was in the county. And then when they came in, if, to me, if it's a residential structure, it's a residential structure. So, once you say, well, you're, you're A-one property, and you give me different setbacks than you do the guy that lives in a subdivision that can build five feet from his fence, or ten feet from the fence, that's not fair. I mean, we live in that house. We, my, my son-in-law lives in that house, just like you live on any other house in, in a subdivision in town. So, you know, we, we meet the, the subd- the subdivision residential setbacks right now. But you throw the A-one in there, then obviously I don't be, meet it, but
You couldn't resign it to a residential district, and then you wouldn't have that
But, but Patsy, you're, you're penalizing me, making me do something
I'm telling you what the ordinance says. I'm not doing any of that. I'm just telling you what the ordinance says.
I, I'm very aware of what the ordinance says, and I don't want to argue with you. I'm just asking you, it's a residential subdivision, or residential house, treat it like a residential house. A-one has nothing to do with it. We ain't going to do anything on that property except raise my grandkids. I got three grandkids who lives there. That's their home. We're not going to do anything, but they going to live there, and hopefully they don't grow up, and they going to be happy there. But building this garage is not going to hurt anybody. I mean, it's like I talked to the city attorney. I can go back and build it on the same footprint, but why not let me make it a little better where my daughter can bring the baby out from the house into the garage without having to go outside and come around and get it in the car? So, that, that, I'm just saying, use a little common sense, please, because that's what we need, is, is this approval. Thank you all.
Pass it out. We'll, we're down to
Comments?
Comments? Any comments from the audience?
Yes.
Give one to Debbie, and it'll go in the file. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. My name's Kent Hirsch. Uh, I'm here representing, uh, Jim and Kathy Counts. Um, they contacted me. Oh, uh, three oh seven Lake Road is my address. The Counts live at thirty-two thirty-two Harley Road, both in Springdale. Uh, February sixth, I was, uh, I was called, walked out to the site, uh, noticed the fence had been partially removed. Those photographs are in the packet. Took those photographs on the sixth. Um, on the seventh, Tom Evers came out. He took a photograph also, uh, in your packet. Uh, the letter from the housing, uh, the building department is in your packet, also dated February the seventh. Uh, an unpermitted building is being constructed within the setback, obviously. That's why we're here. Um, honor the fif- honor about the fifteenth, I talked with Ray, and I told him to rebuild the fence. Uh, show up out there again on the thirty-first, and we see not only has the fence not been rebuilt, uh, but the fence has been removed, so that you can't measure the distance adequate, adequately and accurately from the fence post to the, to the new building. That is the reason I submit to you this new packet, which includes our survey showing a, a, a fence line from the time the Counts has bought this property, what, twenty or thirty years ago? And, uh, also the photographs, which will also show you that the way we measured this thing, it looks like a seven and a half foot, uh, as opposed to a ten-foot distance from the old fence line to the, uh, to the foundation. Uh, I've, I've got in the packet some of the, uh, uh, excuse me, in the, in the most recently delivered packet, we've got, uh, our our, uh, yardsticks, our, our measuring apparatus, and pictures of the fence. You'll also notice in the new photograph, uh, that there's new lighting that's been installed, uh, between the time of February the seventh and fe- and March the thirty-first on the, uh, on the structure there. Also, I noticed that the structure, the way it is, it doesn't fit the fu- the, this the fen- the posts that are up there provide for a wide area, a large, uh, door, barn door, if you will. Maybe it's for a tractor trailer. I don't know. But the way that thing is structured, if you look at the photographs of, and the posts, there's a huge entry and a, uh, a pad, uh, for entry right in the middle. It looks like a tractor trailer shed to me. Uh, maybe it's for those, uh, extra-long, uh, livestock trailers he's got parked on his property. I don't know. But I know this. You're not going to be able to put those little, little doors the way he's got it on that structure, the way it's built. Now, we didn't get any notice of this. We don't know anything about a fit, about a tree falling down. Uh, we never gave permission to tear, tear our fence down. Definitely, it's a new installation. If you'll notice, the way this thing is written, it's like we're trying to rebuild an existing structure. But if you, it, you know, if you read the paperwork, it had you believe that all he's doing is rebuilding an, an existing structure, but that's not so. Uh, I submitted some of the county's documents and also city documents in the packet to show the way the structure was, and that, uh, it's a is built, is a dirt floor structure. Now, you'll see, it's a, a pad, and nobody was requested, no, no, no permit was requested. This thing is, is essentially half-built. And what has happened is your applicant has put himself in a pickle. He's put himself in a position, and now he wants to ask you for his permission, uh, forgiveness after not asking for the proper permission. I, I, I'd reference you to, uh, Article Two, Section Ten of your code, where it explains that the authority you have is under special conditions and circumstances, if they exist, which is peculiar to the land and the structure, you can, uh, uh, you can grant the, um, the variance. And it goes on about how literal interpretation is this and that, and lets you, you some leeway. But then C says that the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. And that's exactly what we've got here. Your applicant came forward, built a structure, didn't ask for a, uh, a permit. There's a letter from the, uh, housing, or from the building inspector in your packet. Not only is it, uh, well, I hate to say it's the way I am, but y'all aren't authorized, if he created the problem, to give him permission at this stage. Now, in any event, notwithstanding that, there's violations of the ordinances. There's unper- permitted structures within the setbacks that we object to. There are violations of the fire code, at least so the letter says, from the, uh, building department. Um, it's not built as the same size as the city, uh, and county records would show that it was, uh, before, so it's certainly not grandfathered. The aesthetics will be terrible. It's, we got this twenty or thirty, you can't tell how tall it is, but as you can see those posts, it's, it's a tall structure. Uh, it's right up against our property, or the Counts' property. Um, it's not, the, if you grant this, it's not going to resolve the issues, because it's not a ten-foot, uh, measurement. It's a seven and a half foot measurement. Um, and that's why I submit the surveys and the, uh, uh, the photographs. What we're asking for is some equal justice. You know, the Counts has owned a good piece of property over there, but they need to get the same justice as anyone else. Just because they have a big piece of property doesn't mean they shouldn't be able to, uh, have the same benefits of the, uh, of the law as other people. Uh, your applicant, I think, comes before you with unclean hands, and I don't believe, if I read this statute or this ordinance correctly, that you have authority to grant permission for, or, uh, excuse me, you would have perhaps an opportunity to grant some permission, but you can't grant the forgiveness after the applicant comes forward and creates a situation for himself. Uh, Kathy, do you have anything you want to say? I know you emotions run high with property, and obviously, our, our constitution provides for property owners. Uh, no taking without due process. We, uh, the legislature passes, uh, Property Owners Bill of Rights and, and We, uh, the legislature passes, uh, Property Owners Bill of Rights, and, and this city has their own set of rules too, and we just want to enforce those. We do not want that structure built up against, uh, the property line. If he, if he builds it according to code, we got nothing to say about it. Jim, you got something?
Sure, sure. My name is Jim Counts. My wife and I own property and are, live at thirty-two thirty-two Harley Road. Tried to be as succinct as possible, we were never informed that a tree from our property fell on Mr. Dotson's garage, we would have been glad to have examined that and to try to give him some relief if that was, if that was the case, but we were never told about that. If you look in the supplemental material that I gave you right here, and the picture that is in the foreground that shows, uh, the, uh, measuring tape, the eighty-four inches sits right over the property line, his, or where the previous fence was, the fence has been taken down, not by us, but it was done by Mr. Dotson. Mr. Dotson claims that this fence was his, although the fence extends all the way along the southern boundary of our property, and apparently we own all of it, except it runs, um, adjacent to Mr. Dotson, and I'm, that pre-existed us purchasing the property, so all I can, all I know is what he says about it. If you will look at that photo, you can see that right down there runs the fence line in the background, you can see leaning up against a tree or some fence posts that have been taken down. Everything that is to the right of that is our property, everything that is to the left of that is Mr. Dotson's property. On the right-hand side, you can see that that area has been brush hogged in the past, and there's no large trees on the left-hand side, which is Mr. Dotson's property, there are some large trees. There's no evidence of a big root ball that's been torn up out, uh, on, from our property that has fallen on anything. The setback calls for thirty-five feet. What he's built so far, and asking, uh, that be approved is for a ten-foot setback, and the border is only seven feet. I would ask that you deny that question. I would also say this, that, uh, it's not just a dispute, Ray and I have never had any animosity toward each other, we've never had any problems or anything like this at all. Uh, I don't, uh, I hate that we're here in this position right now, but it's not, I don't feel like that it's, uh, our responsibility that we're here like this. I hate, you know, I went out and hired a qualified attorney because I wanted to investigate this and everything, and here we are in this position, and I think it's probably best that I not say anything else at this point in time.
Any other comments from the audience? To the commission? Do you call for vote?
Call for the vote.
I've, I've got a question, did, did we find property pins, or we, when, when we did the investigation, are there property pins out there, did we measure off of a known property line, or? Yeah, Tom did the investigation, right, so?
Tom Evers did the investigation, I'm assuming that he ma- he measured from the existing fence, which was, I believe, was there at the time.
Okay, so we didn't find pins, we're going off of-
The pins would have been way, far away.
The, but what we're being asked, and I just wanna make sure, is on the rear setback, thirty-five to ten?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, do you call for the vote? Call for Mr. Culver?
Compton?
No.
Culver? David?
No.
Bueller? Parker?
No.
Peters?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Austin?
No.
Cloud?
No.
Fails nine zero.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's denial of this variance request to the city council. The variance request has, I mean, the appeal has to be filed within fifteen days, the city clerk's office, you have to make the same notifications, and if the variance is denied, you can't apply for the same one for a period of one year.
Next up is B twenty-two dash thirty-six, Gabriella Leach, sixteen oh one Joy Street, variance for increased front fence height from three to six feet, variance for a reduction to front setback from fifteen to five feet, presented by Gabriella Leach.
Good evening. I'm the owner of that property in question, the sixteen oh one Joyce. I'm just, uh, requesting actually a variance for, uh, not to reduce my, um, my fence. Actually bought this property not so long ago, actually, in January seventeen, um, after a very storming situation. Um, finally I got the house, and I was very happy to spend the rest of my life in there with my two children. Um, and so for, after maybe a month, um, actually around, or it was in February fourteen, in fact, I hired a company, it's called Martel Landscaping. Um, I spoke with the owner about building a fence around my property, and he explained me that I didn't need to pull up any permit, because my fence, it was gonna be actually, um, originally, my, uh, property have a chain link fence, and I just needed it, because it has also this property within the back of, um, like, kinda like a facing Falcon Street, there were like three big trees, um, and so they went ahead, on, on that corner, as you can see, um, it was a, uh, three threes next to the big post that it's, I think it's, I don't know if it's a power line or whatever, but, um, I went ahead and removed all the vegetation that was around, um, within the link fence as well, and at the front, which it was a big old bush in the corner. And so just to have that cleared up, and just have that nice space clean, and most, uh, most important, for having this, uh, privacy fence, and for protection, I thi- I have, um, my two children, a dog as well, so I do, um, I work, I'm, you know, hard worker, I work, um, hard for my kids, and I, I want them, when they get back at home from school, to stay there safe. Um, because they wanna go outside in the back, so they can have plenty of room for them to, to, to play around. Um, so, apparently, later on, I found out that this fence, because my house has two, uh, front yards, uh, which is the Falcon, um, as you can see, there's two windows on that side of Falcon Street. Um, honestly, one is my room, one is my kid's room, we kinda feel, felt crippled by leaving that space without a, a fence, because people pass by with their dogs and everything, and because it's a house pretty much all like nineteen seventy-five, I believe, and there's not really, um, like the wind, like you can hear everything from the street, basically. And so for that, um, mostly for, um, that privacy, I went ahead and, and, and moved forward with the building, um, the whole fence around, and, um, apparently, but because it's a, um, also on that side of the street, it's a front face, or, I can call, um, I cannot have that side of the fence built that six foot, or six feet, it has to be three, for what they inform me. And that's one of the main things that I'm, I'm, I'm kinda concerned, because our, you know, it, it wasn't cheap for me, actually, for a single mom, to do all this, and have the home, sweet home for my kids and I. Um, I'm just asking you guys if, um, if you would just allow me to have my fence as it is. And, um, I also, you know, um, I have friends and families that are willing to help me to put in the back, actually, build a shed in the back, so I can put my, um, yard tools and stuff like that. Um, and, and this one in the back, as you, um, you can see in the, down in that picture, um, it, it will sit eventually, uh, ten feet, uh, from the back, um, fence, and I'm asking a variance also for having, um, on this side of the street, uh, five feet in, so kinda like five feet away from the fence. Um, I believe that's the perfect area for that shed, actually, because the rest, I mean, that, that, the backyard, it, it does, it's not really that big, kinda like dip, it's more like in a rectangle, so if I build that in, um, more like the, uh, according to the code, there has to be like twenty and twenty, or something like that, they told me, that will be set basically in the middle of my yard, so, um, that's basically what I'm requesting. I don't know if you guys got the rest of that information, and if you guys have any questions?
Staff comments?
The chain link fence that was there, did it end at the back of the house?
Yeah, previously it was like that, but, um, by speaking with the, um, the guy that was building this, um, because I was concerned, in fact, on the other side too, of, obviously my neighbors have windows and everything, I thought it'll be better for me, just to have that privacy, not have my windows kinda exposed to the public, or exposed to, to, um, um, and that side of Falcon, and he told me, we'll be okay, as long I will not reach the, like, the six, uh, feet, it'll be okay, just to have it like it is.
Well, he should have checked with the city before he told you that, because it does have two fronts. There are also, we, we see, received several comments, and you have some emails that were submitted about concern about being able to see around that fence when you pull up there for traffic concerns and things like that. Uh, if the fence was pulled back to the back corner of the house, which is what we've done in a lot of occasions, and allowed it to be six foot to the back edge of that house, I think that would address the traffic concerns in that area.
Because as far as I, uh, been, you know, talking with people, um, some neighbors, they said actually it looks cleaner than before, because there is nothing of the, um, ivies and stuff like that tangled up with the, uh, link fence, and also those streets, uh, that they were in the back, um, you know, it looks nice and clean and neat, and by improving all that as well, I removed a big old bush that was right on the corner of the, um, the front of the house, it was, that one actually, somebody told me, that that was actually creating block in the street view, um, but anything else, my house kinda set far, I don't know how many, uh, how long it is from the street side up to back, to where that house is started, but it's pretty far, so it's, from what I heard, it's not really representing a, an issue.
Is this a tree, is this large evergreen, is that in front of your house too, that shows up in this picture?
Yeah, they also clean it up, so it's, it's, that one, it's, it's like a pine, but it's not, it's not a, I have in other pictures that I have sent, but I guess you guys don't have it, um.
Well, she's looking, do y'all wanna stipulate the, uh, comments that you received as part for the record, do you want me to read them? Anybody good with that? Okay, so those will be put into the record, uh, both of them have concerns about, at, at that location of, in the front of the house.
Any comments from the audience? Please state your name and address.
My name is James Robinson. I live at twenty-one oh nine Carnes Drive, Springdale, that you, um, turn from Falcon, um, go down Joy till it deadens into Platt, and then Carnes is just around the corner. I've lived there for over thirty-seven years. Uh, the bushes she's talking about was just a shrub, uh, like a lot of people, you know, li- linear thing. But, um, I come here because it is very, very blocks the view. Um, I videoed today several cars passing by, when you pull up to the stop sign on Joy facing Falcon. Uh, before you can see a car coming in, it takes about two seconds for that car to be into the intersection of the street. And, uh, for a car going thirty mile an hour, uh, that's forty-four feet per minute, and, I mean, per second, and it takes approximately one hundred nine feet to react and stop, which put, would put a car beyond the intersection. And I got this information from, uh, nacco.org docs using vehicles stopping distance and time, uh, it's a, easy on the, you know, just type in the internet. But the amount of time to make a right-hand turn also, to get parallel, takes approximately five seconds. And as I said, it's between two and three seconds before a car comes in, when it comes actually into view, after trying to look at the, uh, out into the street. That's for an average car. School buses travel that, uh, twice a day at least, several school buses travel that, that distance. And so it would be very easy to pull out in front of a school bus. My main concerns are, location of the intersection is only three blocks from Smith Elementary School. Sometimes there are cars that are actually backed up all the way back down to Carnes. It is a rare occasion, but it does happen. Twice daily, there's increased traffic because of the school, uh, both in vehicle traffic and in pedestrian traffic, it's children and sometimes parents walking the children, uh, to Smith School. Falcon is from the east, an incline, so as the fence is taller than, uh, the three feet, it makes it even that much harder to see, since coming from the, uh, east is an incline. And we're having ever-increasing traffic in this area, as I said, I've lived there thirty-seven years at that house. The widening of Fortieth Street will definitely increase the traffic on Falcon flow, especially with a lot of the school traffic going, and not just school, but to the JB, uh, and Janelle Hunt Family Ozark Highlands Nature Center. I don't know if you've seen it, but it is a gorgeous building, it's a thirty-two hundred square foot facility on sixty-one acres, and it's a gorgeous place, and I can guarantee there's gonna be a lot of people going to that, just as soon as, uh, Fortieth is completed, uh, they are widening it, and, uh, it is just fabulous. Vehicles, also that there are not high-powered vehicles, take a little bit longer than my Chrysler van to pull out. Small sports cars have little engines, they use high RPMs and, and low ratio transmissions to go, and they're fun to drive, but it takes them a little bit longer to get out in the street. I have a diesel truck, diesel vehicles take a little bit longer to pull things, I'm not the only one in the area that has a diesel truck, and I have an RV, as many other people have RVs. And so when, when my, my diesel truck, uh, I have a thirty-seven foot RV, and it, to get up to two hundred ten horsepower, that's what they rate the engine at, that's at twenty-six hundred RPMs, well, you're sitting at a stop at five hundred RPMs, and it takes a while to get that up to twenty-six hundred RPMs. So, before I could even get started out there, a car can come up and be into the middle of the intersection before I would see it. There's a lot of people that, uh, do lawn work in the area, and they're usually driving small trucks with trailers with their tractors, uh, lawn mowers and things on the back. Pulling out would be another, uh, issue with them, because you get started, especially if you're gonna make a, a right-hand turn, can't see and you're focusing to where you're turning, and, uh, there's just not enough time. Lack of good alternate routes. Um, I, I was talking with some of my neighbors, they, well, I'm just going down McDonald, uh, so I can see. Well, McDonald is a very steep hill going down into, uh, Falcon, and if you're pulling a, a camper, uh, that, that's just a pretty good hard braking issue. And so, there's just really no good alternate routes. Any other home, I really wouldn't have an issue with the fence, but this is on the corner of Falcon and Joy. It is a busy intersection, and only going to get worse, and, and you just do not have- busy intersection and only going to get worse. And you just do not have the vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
I just want to, I just want to add that, if you guys allow me, that on that street, the joys, it's, there is a stop in there. So, you know, we should be able to make that stop right there, not just to slide out of the street, hoping nobody will come. Like, regardless if, if there is no fence at all, or it is or it's not, we do have to make a stop in there. And yeah, we do have the, in more consideration, it's because we do have the, the school over there. So it's not a fast road either, you know, for us to drive that fast. And as far as, you know, like I said, as far as the, within that view, I'm pretty sure my house is extending very far from the street for you to have the view. I mean, if you ever drive by, you'll see it. Thank you.
You have a comment? You need to go to the mic and state your name and address, please?
My name is Carrie Smith, and I live at eight oh nine Crestwood. I am a friend of Gabby, and I came here to support her tonight. I have been to her house, and in fact, I was there last weekend, and she was telling me about coming here tonight. And as my husband and I were pulling out, we were kind of looking at this issue, and because we've been thinking about building fences and all of that, and it is definitely not an extreme case like this gentleman has just presented. It is, it does set pretty far back, and if you come to a complete stop, you can clearly see both ways. I know that Gabby has had issues with some of the other neighbors, and so I just want this to be about the fence and not about a single mom that built, paid for a fence and now might have to tear it down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Martha Robinson, and I live at twenty-one oh nine Carnes Drive. And as my husband stated, it's not any other property in the neighborhood, it would be more than acceptable. The fence is very nice, and the home looks nice. And we were so delighted that someone purchased that home, and it looks like they're going to take very good care of it. However, we have lived in the neighborhood for thirty-seven years, and that has always been a place that you had to really watch. And in the afternoons, especially when you've got the Smith Elementary School traffic there, sometimes it's backed up clear down to Glenn Street. And that causes visibility problems, because you no longer can see. It's like my husband said, but the time a car passes where you can see where that car's coming, it takes two to three seconds for them to enter that intersection. And if you have turned to make a right-hand turn especially, you don't have time to break and look back. It's just the amount of time, and it's, it's that portion of the fence that sits on the Falcon side of the street. I have no issue with the other parts of it. And I just think it's something we need to consider, because there is a lot of pedestrian traffic in the mornings and the afternoons with schoolchildren, and with the cars parked there waiting to enter the Smith School parking lot to pick up their kids, it really makes it difficult for people trying to get in and out of that area.
Thank you. Any other comments to the commission? Be a call for the vote.
Hey Gabriella, before we vote, I just want you to know that I commend you for putting the time and effort into your dwelling. The fence looks tremendous and to put a backyard for your kids. So regardless of what we decide tonight, thank you for improving your property.
There's a, there's a site triangle that is in the geometric design for streets that I don't object to the fence being adjacent to Falcon, but the site triangle, Katie, you could probably look that up, could, is dictated by design speeds. So if your request is all or nothing, I'm sorry, because I don't want to vote the way I'm going to have to. If you cleared the site triangle, I'd have a different opinion.
I wasn't going to weigh into this, but I used to live in that neighborhood, and I actually saw when the fence was being built. I saw the posts, and I called to have us kind of, I wish it could have been stopped then. Or, but, but I'm wondering if there's a compromise, kind of to Ben's point, with the, with the angles. And, and I understand your concern about your, your window. I, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be at the front of the, front corner of the house or the back corner of the house. If we get it, if she were willing to move it back where it was out of those sightlines and created a safe intersection, then perhaps the, the fence could just be moved back where her, her, the window she's concerned about could still be in her backyard behind the fence. I don't know, it's something to look at. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Would y'all, I mean, anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, that we're, we're talking about the front corner or the back corner, but, but alleviate her concern, we might be able to fix the problem. And it is a problem. I'm, before, before you owned the house, for years, there was a, there was a hedge there, and y'all will remember, it's always been hard to see. And I remember years ago, Public Works worked with the prop, the, the previous property owner and had, had all that removed because of the sightlines, because of the, the safety issues and safety concerns. So maybe, maybe there are some other things to be considered besides yes or no, or, I don't know, just, I just wanted to throw that out there for, to think about.
So Chairman, is it possible to table this for a month while someone from the city goes out from code enforcement and looks at that, to see if there is an opportunity that Gabriella, maybe we could help with, right? If you, if they could show you where the fence might need to move, if you're willing to do that, to open up those sightlines for the intersection, then I think maybe to the mayor's point, we could have a compromise that works for everybody. But that's, that's totally up to you. If you want us to pursue that, we're happy to, to try and help and, and look at that with you. But that's totally up to you.
And what about the shed in the back?
You need to come up to the mic first.
What about the shed in the back?
Okay, well, we're, we're just talking about the fence first.
Oh, okay.
We got to talk about the other one first.
Uh, I guess so. If, maybe, I like that idea that the gentleman had, maybe moving a little bit far, but at the same time, it would give me that confidence of privacy as well. Something that I, I'm willing to work with.
So do you want to table your variance request to the next meeting and meet with engineering and see what could be worked out?
Sure.
Okay.
I also might recommend talking to whoever built your fence and told you that you didn't need to do X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Because they were wrong.
Yeah, it is, it is very expensive right now with the, the material. I was very proud to pull it out of myself and, and build what I have.
Katie, can you get her contact information so y'all can go out and meet with her and see what, what we can work out? And we'll put you on the first of the agenda next month's meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about the, the location of the shed at the same time.
All right. Thank you.
Rotate this. With that, I believe, that's it.
I'll print this one.
Oh, we got one more. Okay, we're going with B twenty-two dash thirty-seven, Elm Springs Flex LLC, White Road across from Mimosa Avenue. Variance for commercial design standards, parking lot orientation presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brandon Rush, ESI. This is a non-large-scale development. We asked for a variance last go-around, and then it occurred to us that we also need a variance for over sixty percent of the parking between the road and the buildings. So we are back asking for that.
Staff comments?
I don't have any comments. You're doing landscaping along the, the street to kind of block the headlights that would be into the street and the neighborhood properties?
Yes.
To, to provide that kind of screening so that the parking in front won't be a nuisance with them?
Yes, there will be significant landscaping along the road there.
Any comments from the audience to the commission? Will you call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. David.
Call for the vote, Mr. David.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Compton?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Let me comment on this, David. This waiver of subdivisionary requirements for Brenda Lazenby, after meeting with the, the city attorney this afternoon, I think we created that lot split already when we let those streets go through. So we really don't need a waiver, and, you know, that's already been filed. You can, you can number those, one, two, and three. Now, if you change them again, you're going to have to come in and replant it. Okay. Okay. No more changes, guys. Stick with what we got. Okay. And I can tell you, not only because I thought it was going to be a long meeting, but I haven't had time to do a planners director, planning directors report, and I didn't figure y'all would be too heartbroken if you didn't get one tonight. Anyway, the planning work session for this month, we're not doing a regular work session. We're having a planning commission council get-together on April the twentieth from five to eight at Black Apple. So everybody let us, let us know if you're going to be there. Come bring your significant others, and we'll just kind of, we were going to do it at Christmas time, but that never worked out. So now we're doing it in the spring instead of at Christmas time. So no work session this month. And I don't think anybody will mind, really. I could do my planning directors report then, yeah, too. Don't count on that either.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Let's go. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.